I'm not sure if everybody is muted, but I don't hear anyone.
I can hear you, Jessica.
Brad, can you hear me?
This is Kyle. It sounds like City Council sound is not working. Joe's mic's working, mine's working, and I hear Jessica just fine.
Another sound check from Chambers, Jessica, Joe, Kyle. Can anyone hear us?
Chris, I can hear you, but you're faint.
Same.
Okay.
Joe, you have an echo. Not sure what that is, but we're working on the sound. Can you hear us?
Testing one, two. Jess, can you hear us?
I can hear you, but it's not very loud, so speak up.
About now.
That's better.
All right, council. Well, that's not as good as we're gonna do. Everyone, please get close to the microphone when you speak. And we will go ahead and get started. We have limited time. So with that, council called the meeting order for the record. It is Tuesday, February 22nd, 2022 at 4:34 PM. We will begin this afternoon's City Council work session with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Councilwoman Strater.
Here.
Councilman Burton.
Here.
Councilwoman Perro.
Here.
Councilman Borton.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Mayor Simison.
Here. Next item is adoption of the agenda. Mr. Mayor. Councilman Hoagland.
I move adoption of the agenda as published.
Second.
I have a motion and a second for the adoption of the agendas published. Is there any discussion? If not, all favor signified by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The agenda is adopted. Next is the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I move adoption of the consent agenda and for the mayor to sign and clerk to attest.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Is there any discussion? If not, all favor signified by saying aye.
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 Opposed, nay. The ayes have it, and the consent agenda is agreed to. There are no items moved from the consent agenda. So we will go into Department Commission Reports Action Item, which is item 18, which is the West Ada School District Development Letter Changes. Council, just so I can, I'm gonna invite Mr. Hood can come up first, or just go with Miranda. Miranda, as you come forward, just wanna lay out how we'll try to approach this timeframe. What I would ask is you let the school district go through and give their full presentation. Make notes. If you have any questions, so we can come back to you, so we don't disrupt the chain of thought if we can. Afterwards, we'll recognize each council member for five minutes for any questions you may have, and we'll just start with seat 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, go down the road. That way, everyone hopefully has the same amount of opportunity to ask any questions they have and be mindful to get Dr. Bob off to his next appointment. So he's here to answer questions that everyone may have during their time period. So we'll try to take that approach. So Miranda, turn this over to you.
Mr. Mayor, councilpersons, I would just here to invite
Her to invite
the one that's gonna be doing the presentation. Mayor said Derek Bob is
Derek Bob is Dr. Bob, he's from the older district.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor.
Members of the council.
That sound better.
Sound better.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Perfect. Will it pull up the presentation as well? Wonderful. Okay. Thank you. So just for the record, my name is Jonathan Gillan. I am actually the chief of operations for the school district, so not the assistant superintendent, but thank you, Miranda, for giving me a promotion. So Dr. Bob is here with us tonight. He is, he's gonna have to leave in a little bit, so you might see him step out for a little bit to head to another West Ada engagement, so you'll be able to have the opportunity to visit with Marcy and I tonight. My plan is to spend just a couple of minutes. I'm gonna kinda outline for you what the presentation's gonna look like, and then we're gonna let Marcy start to dig into data from there. So just to start, I wanted to give you, we had a discussion between our two boards back in May. And there was a lot of things that we talked about, and it's not very often when you give a presentation, you have one of these joint meetings, and you get to come back and say, we have answers to a lot of these things. So what you're gonna see tonight is I'll start to walk through those data, try to identify some of these questions you had, identify the data points that you talked about, and how it is we're working through them. So what we are gonna cover tonight, there's gonna be a lot of discussion. We're gonna talk about Platts, we're gonna talk about residents, we're gonna talk about number of homes, we're gonna talk about how we grid data, we're gonna talk about attendance areas, we're gonna walk through all of that thing. We're gonna spend some time talking about projections we've developed. Some of the variables with those projections, specifically when developments are gonna come into play, how they're gonna build out, what our expectations are for kids, some of the data that we're using that we're still learning from. And so I think that's something you're gonna hear a lot. We have built this massive data, we have great opportunity that now we've started to learn, now we have new sets of questions and new things that we're gonna walk through. We're gonna talk a little bit about how we use this data. And for us, I wanna be, I guess, to share that the district actually uses this data as well. So this is not just for the development of the letters. We actually use this as part of enrollment management projections for us, as we start to look at what our needs are gonna be in the future. And then there's some other things that we'll just briefly touch on. As I said, we're starting to get lots of data, right? And so we've looked at student generation rates, and we've started to identify how that works. And what that often does when you have data is now we have a new set of questions. We have to start to learn things that we don't actually have data on. So we're looking into pulling in a contractor to help us do a demographic analysis of our district. Specifically, what we're gonna try to look at is incorporating not only development data into this, but birth rate data into this. We're trying to incorporate data of who is moving into our community. What is our mobility rate associated with that? Where are students gonna leave? Where are they coming from? You know, if we have a student who leaves, so starting to capture that data and also starting to capture market share. So as education becomes a more competitive market, what is our market share in the district? Where are some of our students who maybe, you know, because of COVID, changed their things? They decided to be a homeschool, they maybe transferred to a charter school. What does that impact have on us as well? I would love to be able to tell you we'll have that data tonight. We won't. So that's part of the demographic study that we're gonna be working on and getting done. And so you'll see that data as we continue to refine in the future. What we're not probably gonna cover tonight, 'cause quite honestly, there's not enough time, and we're still working on it, is a facility plan. So even though you don't see it in the presentation, we are working on it. So we are going through the process of looking at our sites. We're walking through and identifying what it would look like based on the buildings we're gonna put there. What does that do for our 10-year plan? How does that impact with enrollment, enrollment projections? And so that work is continuing to be ongoing. Other things you probably won't hear from us, I'd love to be able to tell you, I can guarantee you the number of students that are gonna come. That would be awesome. I would love to be able to tell you this is exactly what you're gonna see, and unfortunately, that's not the case. I talked a little bit about here's data we have, and here's generating the new questions. Part of that is really the iterations of the data we're using as we start analyzing it. So now we've started to pull in all this data, we've started to run projections, and now what we're gonna start to see is we go into this academic year and the next one, we're gonna be able to analyze some of that. How are we doing? How is it trending? What is our expectations for who is moving to this community? Do they all have students? Do they not have students? Are our ideas of a certain grid different than a different grid? And so we'll be able to now start analyzing our data. So we're starting to get in the position of being able to do that. And then really, what do we talk about with next steps? So we're continuing to evaluate those. I know on the development letters, we've talked about our toolkit, so that'll be something we'll dig into. And so then we'll start to walk through, maybe not necessarily when we're gonna make all those decisions, but what they look like and how we can work together and partner through that. Wouldn't be in education if I didn't talk about learning outcomes. So some things we're hoping to get out of our conversation, right, is an understanding at a comfort level for the data that we have. Become aware of some timelines, again, where you're gonna see changes in data and new things we're gonna do, and then obviously identify ways we can work together more. And with that, Ms. Horner's gonna come up and gonna share with you for a little bit. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm so excited to be here today and have this conversation with you. I've been listening to your conversation, and it just, I'm just really happy to be here and be a part of the conversation. So we're gonna get started right away, 'cause I know we've got a time crunch, and I'll try not to talk too fast, 'cause I wanna get through all this information. So if you feel like I'm just, if you can't understand me, slow me down, and I'd be happy to, happy to slow down. So first of all, how do we analyze? All right, so we have a large district. How are we going to analyze the growth and the developments and the student household information with such a large district? And we're just going to do it one piece at a time. So to easily track data, we're going to take the district and we're gonna divide it into a grid. This is, this is something that I quite frankly, can see in my sleep, because everything is going to come back to this grid. So it's going to pretty much be a square mile block. Some cases, it's gonna follow natural barrier or natural boundaries, because that's going to work out a little bit better. And what is it that we're tracking? We're going to be tracking the new residential developments. We are tracking the new residential developments, student household locations, parcels of land, and school attendance areas, and I'm going to talk about each one of these areas just a little bit. So first, the new residential developments. You know the process. So we're notified of pre-app meetings. We gather information from those pre-app meetings and often attend those pre-app meetings to understand what is coming. Then we receive those transmittals of the applications containing the hearing dates, how many lots are in those pending applications. Then obviously, it goes to planning and zoning, city council meetings. Those meetings are tracked so that we know if they're approved, continued, denied. And then, of course, the second transmittal to let us know that those final Platts are on schedule. And then after that, we, I still want to track what is happening with those developments. So I'm pulling the Ada County Assessor data on parcels to find when those large parcels have now been broken down into small individual lots. And that's like the next step in identifying where this development is in the, in the process. So here's this grid that we're gonna talk about. Jonathan mentioned it. Each development, as it comes in at the pre-app level or the transmittal, is drawn in a program called ARC GIS. It's drawn on a map according to the description. So the exact parcel is drawn, and it's also, you're gonna see different colors. These are the colors representing what stage the, what stage of the application process this development is in, and I'm gonna talk about those a little bit individually. So here's a zoomed in area. So you can see each of these levels. So in the pink, you can see these pre-app. Now, I'm not using these for tracking numbers. They often don't come to pass. They're just identified, knowing that this is an area that is going to be developed, if not now, eventually. And then, as I get those transmittals, they're changed to pending status. They are, you've seen the, in my transmittal letters, when they're approved, these are not counted as approved developments until they've gone to council and have been approved. We are approximating, depending on the size of the development and other factors, that this is going to be completed in approximately four to seven years. We've talked with your planning staff, other planning staff, talked to some developers. I have not heard any negative feedback about this timeframe. We'll continue to monitor these to see if this timeframe needs to be adjusted. That's part of our learning process, but for now, we're going to take those pending applications and and estimate that four to seven-year build-out. Build-out and occupied. And then, once they're approved, you'll see these orange that are approved. That's gonna be about a three to five-year completion. Moving on to final plat in the green, and then you'll see in those developments that are in the blue, those are, they've now received or been given the Ada County Assessor individual parcels for those developments. I call those develop. And those are maybe a one to three-year timeframe before those are completed. Okay, moving on to student household locations. So we take the student data from our Power School system. We geocode them, which means that we're linking those address data to the map. So each of these red dots represent a student. It looks like they represent a household. Each red dot, or the red dot might have multiple red dots on that, and we can track that in our system. The parcels of land, as I've said, I download those directly from the Ada County Assessor map. I do it about quarterly, so I'm getting the most recent data that's possible. This information is valuable. It tells us what kind of residential or what kind of lot it is. It could be residential, commercial, farm, land. So it gives us really good valuable data. And then, of course, each traditional school has an attendance area where the students will likely attend. They all differ, and those attendance areas are approved by our board. Excuse me. And we may change those attendance areas to balance enrollment if necessary. So that's how the data is collected, and I'm gonna go through and talk about how the data is organized. So each of the grid blocks are labeled by a corresponding row and number. Each data set is also organized by this label. The developments, the students, the parcels, subdivisions, and even attendance areas are going to lay within and can be identified by their grid label. And then this data currently is recorded and maintained in spreadsheets. I just realized that is spelled wrong, probably 'cause I took it out and put it back in. I apologize. We're currently in the process of purchasing a software that is going to allow us to have this data all in one location, so I'm very excited about that. So here is an example of a portion of the development spreadsheet. So you can see here that the developments are all listed. It identifies what block they're in, or what grid, that grid area the development is in, the number of units, whether it's a multifamily housing, the approving agency, as well as the status that it's in. So you can see that in one spreadsheet, we've got the developments tracked, and in a corresponding spreadsheet, we're going to have those numbers consolidated. So the, everything that is in one status, so the, those that have been approved, the preliminary Platts approved, are gonna be consolidated, as you can see from the image on the left to the image on the right. And just a reminder, those are all designated in this timeframe. So this will calculate the future single-family dwellings in relation to their location on the grid, as well as the multifamily. And the multifamily just has an additional row for the conditional use permit approval. This, and another spreadsheet shows the student household information. So as you can see, we take each grid, we count the number of students in that grid and designate it by what grade level they're in right now, or what school type they're in, elementary, middle school, high school. This is actual data, not estimates like we've used before. In the past, we kind of took a big, big generic number and applied it. This is actual students in actual lots. So this spreadsheet shows the residential parcels in relation to their location on the grid, and this is also done, or research has been done to identify the multifamily units as well. So you can see each of these grids. Now, these are identified by the Ada County Assessor as residential lots. Some of them that are in the building process will still be identified as land. So I'm counting, when I'm counting these, for, to determine what, how many students we're generating from an area, I'm going to be consistent and stick with the Ada County Assessor with the property type as residential. Each attendance area can also be identified by the group of block or by a group of blocks. The data in each block is used to determine an appropriate attendance area for each school. And just a note, 'cause we'll kind of talk about this later, that each of those, the attendance area doesn't always work out to go to the square mile or the block. So once in a while, the attendance area lines will go through a block. I feel like I'm breezing through this so fast. You're staying, okay, perfect. All right, so we covered collected, we've covered organized. Now we'll get into analyzed, 'cause I know this is why you're really here for. Well, you're here 'cause you have to be. This is what I'm really here for. Okay, so we're gonna take each of those four areas that we just talked about. And we're going to now talk about calculating our student generation rate. And then we'll go on to projecting future enrollment. So we have here, those, in each of those grid blocks, the number of actual students generated per household. So these are the number of residential parcels, the number of students, even the number at each level, and they're identified per block on the map. As you can see here, the student generation rate is all calculated, and it is a wide range depending on where that grid is. Because we're using the Ada County Assessor map, we're also able to identify what the taxable value is of the house. And this is kind of, if you remember back when we had that meeting, Miranda talked about, there are other factors that we can study and learn. We can, so this is just one of those. So that we can identify what number of student we might get at a certain price point. So there's still more to learn, but this is definitely a start for us. We're also tracking the multifamily. So these are the actual number of multifamily units against the students that live in that. There's still, again, a lot more to learn. Price points, rental points. But you can also see just in this small area that we have some multifamily student generation rates that are .08 in some areas and some that are 1.06. So this is a really, there's a lot of variables here, and we're, we're still learning, but we're able to identify now where our students are coming from in those multifamily housing areas. Okay, so we can track this by attendance area as well. So for example, we're going to use the Mary McPherson attendance area. It's the area in red and consists of blocks 12C, D, and so on. You can see that attendance area over in the left, and the spreadsheet with the residential parcels and the student information over here on the right. So the average student generation rate in the Mary McPherson attendance area is .49. This is the average of each block that make up the attendance area, and we can even identify what the student generation rate is per elementary, middle, and high school. In the past, we just took the generic per student and then multiplied that and divided it by the number of grade levels in. But this is, we're actually getting, so that we can identify in this area, we might see more high school students. In this area, we might see more elementary students. So we can break it down per, per school type. All right, moving on to projecting future enrollment. So here we have the attendance area, now it's on the right, with the corresponding single family up on the, on the left on the top, that's single family. I don't have a label on it, I'm sorry, but below that, you can see the multifamily. And the, the yellow box around it, you can just see where that's identified in that 13E grid block. We are corresponding, these are what the single-family dwelling units that have been, the preliminary Platts have been approved. 707 at the time I did this. Forty have gone on to the final plat approval, and in this area, no single, or in this grid, there's no multifamily units that are pending or approved. As I said, not all, it doesn't always work out perfectly and easy with the grids, so sometimes we have to take out. But just acknowledging that we are taking out some of those developments that are not counted in that attendance area, because we wanna have the most accurate information we can for those attendance areas. And as you see here, this all corresponds to, and accumulates to the number of pending preliminary plat, final plat developments. So then, this is, this is how I get those numbers in the, in the, or in the development letters that I send you. How many approved lots for single family? How many approved lots for multifamily? Okay, that's how it's collected, organized, analyzed. Now we're gonna talk about just how I'm sharing that information with you, and anybody, really, not just you. Okay, so I'm gonna use the Centerville letter as, as an example. So I know that there's been questions about, you know, why we've changed the letters, and really, since I took over the letters, it's kind of been an ongoing, how can I get you the best information? As you see, there's a lot of information here. It's really hard to cram all this information into a letter, and I understand that it often causes more questions. So when, when you ask what weight can we put on this, this information, hopefully, hopefully, this, this presentation will allow you to answer that for yourselves. So again, this is, as stated in the letter, this is based on the current enrollment data specific to the area, and I'll, I'll give you some examples here. So in this, as you see, the 138 school-aged children, and again, this is saying that this is based on the attendance areas as of this school year. And I wanna just make sure to point that out, because some of these developments might become finalized, and the attendance areas might have changed. So based on the information that we have right now, the estimation is this number of school-aged children. So we're gonna, I'm gonna take that grid that this, that this application is in, this 13I, and I take the number, you know, literally have my math out when I'm doing this. So in this area, we have 1,526 residential parcels, 974 students. So our student generation rate in this area is .64 per residential parcel. I think this is really important, because this is, I'm going to assume that this development, because it's going in this area, we're going to likely generate the same number of students that we are typically getting from the rest of that square block. That's an assumption that we're making. That may or may not come to pass, but that's the assumption that, that we're gonna go on for this analysis. We're going to do the same thing for multifamily. So in this particular, this, this particular application had multifamily in the application. There is no multifamily for me to compare this to in grid I. In fact, there's not much around until you see grid numbers 12G and 12H. Both of those have multifamily. So 12G has a student generation So 12G has a student generation rate of .2, 12H has a student generation rate of .82. I personally don't feel comfortable giving either one of those numbers, because they're so different. So I have an average, I'm taking an average of those two. So we have the 203 single-family units, multiplied by the student generation rate in that area, to come up with 130 from the single-family units, and then taking the 16 multifamily units by the .51, which is the student generation rate for the multifamily that I just averaged out, and point, or to come up with eight. And so that's how I'm getting the 138 students from that development application. The next section of the letter talks specifically about what schools are going to be impacted by this development. The enrollment number is the current enrollment. The capacity is the fixed building capacity. You already know how the numbers from the approved lots per attendance area, as well as the approved multifamily units from the attendance areas. And I'll talk to you a little bit now about how I come up with those numbers for projected students from approved developments. So this is an, is an analysis of what the average student generation rate is for the attendance area for each school, taking into account the student grade level and the number of approved developments in that attendance area. So, in this development application, this development sits in the Hillsdale Elementary Attendance Area. Going through the exercise that I just showed you with the Mary McPherson, in Hillsdale, the elementary student, student generation rate is .26. That's for just the Hillsdale. The Lake Hazel Middle School Attendance Area, the student generation rate for the, for that area is, for middle school students is .11. And Mountain View, the student generation rate for Mountain View, for high school students is .16. So we take those numbers, the approved lots, times the student generation rate. If there is multifamily in the application, it's going to be the multifamily student generation rate per that grade level. And that's how we come up with these numbers for you. So in Hillsdale, from the developments that have already been approved, not including the development in this application, we are projecting 350 students. At the point that they are all completed, that the development is all completed and occupied, and remember, this is in that range, that timeline of not next year, but four to seven, we don't actually know. We're estimating the time that this is going to happen. In addition to this letter, now, at this meeting we had on March 13th, if you remember, there was a question about understanding the actual number, right? And Councilman Holgland, I think you said that we want to understand when there might be a red flag, and not just truly understand the, to truly understand the situation and not just the number. And so this is, I feel, the best way to give you that information. So this is analyzing the school, like really analyzing, what does it look like? What is happening in that school? And then saying to you, based on what is happening at that school, when, and assuming that everything is going to go status quo, same student generation rates, buildings will build out, or homes will build out the same timeframes, assuming all of those remain the same, then we're going to, going to be at a certain level. So in this particular level, we're saying that the elementary schools are projected to be at maximum capacity. And the high school is also projected to be at full utilization. Now, what we're not saying here is, we can't handle these kids, please deny this development. This is just an, an analysis of what is going to be happening at this current time with our current number of, of schools and our current capacity without making adjustments. But then we need to follow that up with what tools do we have? Because it would be really great if we could go from where we are to another school, but we, we can't. We've got to do some things in between there to accommodate the additional students. And we can, and we're prepared for it. We are, as you've seen, we're watching what's happening, and we are preparing and planning ahead. We might not have this, that information to you, but we are definitely doing it inside the buildings, inside my office. So we're going to say things like, in this, in this school, we might have to, we might have to, at some point, do one or more of these. We might have to transport kids. We might have to change an attendance area. We might have to build another school to accommodate. These are just options that we may need to implement to meet the needs of the students. And again, they can be different for other schools, or for each school. Done. Okay. Okay, hold on. That was, that was the fastest I've done this presentation. I think I'm ready for your questions.
Okay, well, Mr. Clerk, if you would put the timer at five minutes, as I mentioned, we'll just start, and we'll go as fast as we can, starting with seat number one, which happens to be Councilman Schrader for five minutes.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you so much for coming, Marcy. I really appreciate it. I appreciate the really granular dive into the data. I think that's helpful. I am not concerned about granular data. I like to just pull back. I'm really concerned about the whole situation. So what is your projection for student capacity district-wide in the next two to five years?
Projection for school capacity? So, the problem with that is, we have grow, we have areas with capacity where there's not growth. So that, it's almost like apples and oranges. We can't necessarily count certain capacity.
Mr. Mayor, if I might?
You don't have to.
I'm going to be butting in, because I've only five minutes, and I'm intending to use all of it. So I did my own projection model because of my level of frustration. And I, mine was very simple. It wasn't individual developments. I simply said, if we take the total capacity in the district, and I gave you a program capacity discount of 1,200 students, take it or leave it, we're approving 2,500 new housing units per year. I took the number of students graduating each year, subtracted the number of kindergarteners coming in. I'm showing with that very back of the envelope stuff that you are thousands of students over capacity. If the whole district is trending growth, I'm showing that you're totally out of capacity in two years. So I guess, I understand what you're saying. You have exist, you have students coming from existing housing stock. But what I'm really struggling with is to understand what your projections are district-wide. Because I want to give you guys credit, you're going to redraw boundaries, you're going to put in portables, and I'd love to know how much those interim measures can handle. But my question to you is, two questions. What's your projection district-wide for your capacity in the near term, the next couple of years? My second question is, what is an amount of growth that you cannot handle? What is an amount of new students that causes the quality of education to deteriorate significantly, or working backwards? You know, what, what is it that you guys can't handle?
I'm definitely projecting, you want to take that? So I'm definitely projecting at the, at the level that makes sense, which, to me, which is in, in regions. So I, I don't know that I can personally answer your capacity question for district-wide, because, again, all, my analysis is definitely by region. And then, you want to?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So, thank you for the question. Try to come up, I can tell you, let's talk about where we're at right now. So currently, our district is sitting around 39,200 students, we'll say, give or take. You know, and at the height before COVID impacted us, we were sitting at roughly 40,398. So we did have a reduction, right, which I, I think has allowed us some time and flexibility to be able to manage the growth. And so then what we will continue to do, I think to answer your question of, where are we going to be at? How can we handle two and five years from now? As part of the data that we're working on right now, as part of that facility plan, is running those projections, is looking at where we see the impact of that growth, and what our response will be to that, which may include any one of the items in our toolkit, or it may be a discussion that we have with the board as well about the potential of bonding. So, again, just kind of helping to manage that growth. As far as a number, when we say, where's the number where we start to say, that's too much? Really, that starts to get very granular, again, back at the building level. What are the things that we can do in a building to be able to adjust our capacity? And so I'd, I'd love to be able to say, oh, here's the number where it stops, right, and?
Mr. Mayor, sorry, and I hate to cut you off, but I've got less than one minute left, so I'm just going to dig in a little more. My feedback, that, that is not an answer that I love. I hope you guys work on that. You need to have a district-wide capacity projection. I don't see how you could, you know, operate your business without having that macro-level view. I think COVID did buy you a lot of time. What do you specifically need from us? If you're analyzing your growth, school by school, and, and it would be helpful to get a timeframe for your projections for the schools. So, if it's, we expect X number of kids in the next two to four years, and X number of capacity, we, I think we need that timeframe. Do you expect us to manage our growth in response to school capacity at that level?
Mr. Mayor?
I have an answer.
And members of the council. I think what I would ask is that we continue to share information and partner together. I don't think it's necessarily the expectation as the school district, that we would talk to you and necessarily show you how to approve developments. I think we're going to continue to do this sharing and this data, and we're going to be able to share information and be able to tell you about what our projections and where we anticipate growth being.
Alsmann Borden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I've only got one question. If we're doing this five-minute thing, I would, can I give three minutes?
We'll come back. I want to get through everyone, so they get an opportunity. So take your time, have what you want, we'll move on, then we'll go back, give other people more time.
This question might be for Dr. Bob, oh, he's leaving. I saw you. This, it's just one question, it's more of the policy, less granular. So we solicit input from community stakeholders to help us decide if a new development should or should not be annexed into Meridian. We compile all of that data. West Data obviously provides such a letter as one of our community partners. So how do you want us to use your letter and the data in it to assist us in deciding whether or not a new annexation should be approved?
Mr. Mayor, council, here's the intent of that letter, to let you know what the ramifications of impacted schools are, and kind of what our direction would be. I would say each of those pieces kind of buys us, let's say, about a year. If we had to put, if we had to adjust boundaries, and one of the, one of the questions regarding what is our district capacity? There's areas in our district that we could adjust boundaries, and we could, we could put kids in. That becomes, obviously, that's a transportation piece. And, and so there, there's a lot that goes into that. So, so what I would ask you guys to do is look at it and just have an understanding of, if we are going to go down this road, it may mean boundary adjustments. It may mean we have to go for a bond. And, and if we can go arm-in-arm, and that's what I love about this partnership, is if we can go arm-in-arm in that, we can say, yes, we, we approve that. We, we understand that we're going to have to build a school out there. Let's go arm-in-arm towards that bond, or whatever it might be at some point.
There's, there's some feel that it's, we're the tail wagging the dog in raising the alarm of school capacity. And so that question also is trying to help us, guide us in using what's in any such letter. Is there anything that would be within it that would make, would be a communication from the district to us that there is some alarm? Said another way, is it, is it fair to say the contents of the letter and the numbers in it are wholly irrelevant to our determination of whether an application should be annexed? Because it doesn't provide any benchmark that past this point, we recommend you deny it. There's, there's such an alarm. Is it fair to say that the, the numbers shouldn't sway us one way or another?
I think it's fair to say, Mr. Mayor, council, I, I think it's fair to say that if we got to a point where we didn't feel like we were going to be able to hold kids in our schools, there would be a lot of conversations ahead of that. We are always going to be able to educate the kids that, that are in our community. We're going to provide seats for those kids, and, and we're going to provide them great educational experiences. When we say capacity, we're not saying, hey, we're going to put kids on floors, and that, that makes us at a capacity. What we're saying is, we may have to adjust boundaries. That's never a popular decision. Last thing I want to do is move kids from, you know, I, I grew up going to Peregrine Elementary, and then all of a sudden, now, oh, congratulations, you're moving. So it's really just, what I would take the letter as, is really informational to say, okay, these are the ramifications of impacted schools. And, and, and really, that's what I would look at.
And the last is just a comment, and it's not a question, but I make the, the tail wagging the dog comment, just because we are all partners in this process, right? And we want our city to grow well, and have our new residents in an annexation be successful. So, we raise the alarm just in hopes that we're here to help, and if there's anything that, that West Data would ask of the city, to assist it in delivering education, as you described, that you'd ask. So, you know, we, we get concerned about capacity under the assumption that, that we, we just want to help and be available, utilize your data to help us make the best decision, and be receptive to any direction and advice that you provide. And if you've got mechanisms to, to serve all the new students, that's fantastic. But I think that's the genesis of this whole conversation, is we just want to make sure we can help assist West Data in any way possible, so the kids, existing and new, they don't suffer. We're all on the same page there. So, I really appreciate you spending the time to come.
Mr. Mayor, council, and I would just say this to everybody, because I am going to depart here. We value that relationship, and it's, it is that relationship that makes this city amazing. Being able to have these conversations and really work through some of these things, and sometimes they're difficult questions, and sometimes they are, you know, what should we do? And, and I will just tell you, the job that Marcy does, and, and that Miranda does, try to develop this crystal ball and predict what, what kids are going to show up, is miraculous. And we really appreciate that. We appreciate knowing that, that we're all going to work together on this. And hopefully, every single time we meet, I know that when we met last time, I had a privilege of, of being part of that meeting. I think that we're getting better with our data, and, and I think that every time we meet, we'll be able to have a better picture of where we're going. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bob, for being here. Councilman Holgland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Marcy, I, I wanted to make sure I understand the, I, I appreciate you putting this data together and the process, and it's, it's a way to look at it. I just want to make sure I understand something I'm just a little hazy on. And we show the projections and the timeline for developments, depends on where they are in the process, and there's a longer timeline if they're farther out. But at the same time, you got kids that are moving through the, through the school system. Is there any calculation, or it might not change, since you guys have been working with this, the timeline, since you have kids, we'll call aging out, graduating, and then you have other kids moving through, is that going to change calculations? I mean, we hear about lower birth rates and all these different things, and that's hard to factor in. But do you see at, that the calculations are going to be, remain fairly stable, even though kids are moving through the system? And you have these different dates of, well, that's going to be done in three years, X seven years out. That's just, there's a lot of moving parts to that. I guess I'm asking a confidence question. Are you pretty confident in those, those numbers for, for what you think it's going to be?
I'm confident in the data, for sure. Projections are an interesting thing, because the, there's going to be a lot of variables happening, like you said, some moving parts. So, I think as we continue to track in this way, we're going to be able to continue to become better at those projections. And so, we're just going to keep learning more. I, I think that you're, you're, I understand what you're saying with the, with areas that age out. Those happen over a longer period of time, and we can look at things like grade levels and, and, you know, what grade levels we have now versus what we had, you know, or, or what's coming down the pike. But yes, I'm confident in the data. I, and, and I understand there's more. And this is not a, this for sure is not a, here's what we have, and we're going to drop it in your lap, and we're walking away. This is a learning process. And from, you know, this isn't, this is maybe a year's worth now of learning. We have a lot, a lot more to learn. So, and, and we're willing to, because we're, like, like Jonathan said, we're, we're using this for our benefit as well. So we want, we want to get the data the data as good as we can. Is it perfect right now? It's better than it was a year ago.
And a follow-up, and I know this is a question for Jonathan, but I gotta get closer to the mic, so folks online can hear. I'm going back to the olden days, back to the 80s. And we had a new high school, late 70s, Meridian High School, and the 80s were an interesting time. Like now, there was a recession early on, and then we had growth, and things changed. So I called up a retired assistant superintendent for the time Meridian School District, West Data, and said, what did you guys do? What, how did you handle that growth? Because it became quite intense for, at the high school level. He says, well, that was a time we moved the sixth graders to the junior high, middle school, because they were at grade school at the time. He says, boundary adjustments are always an option. He says, moving those boundaries, he says, they are not popular with parents. We all know, some things don't change. They did the mid-high. I participated in that for three years. We had a ninth-grade-only, where Coal Valley is, was just ninth-grade-only, because of capacity, moving kids to junior high, taking ninth grade out. They weren't going to high school yet, so that was another thing. And then as the 80s went on, and we only had the one high school, they went to double shifting. And then he talked about transportation issues and different things, and then Centennial High School came on board. He said, so it really is a matter of just utilizing the tools that you can find and have. Are you confident that you have tools available now to handle the growth that we are experiencing, and looks like it will continue to experience for the time being?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, yes. So I think what you're gonna hear, what you've heard about from West Data previously, right, is that we get creative. And so we find a way to be able to maximize what it is we can do. And so I think you're gonna see that same spirit, and how we're gonna continue to do things. I may not have an answer of whether, you know, we're gonna switch to ninth grade, and whether we're gonna move the students around. But as we start to identify needs, we'll try to evaluate what our options are on the table, which is part of the reason why you're even seeing the toolkit. It's just for us to kind of start sharing, we are thinking about these things. We are looking for options to answer these questions.
Last question, then. So do you need the city council to take action right now in slowing growth down?
I don't believe, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council, I don't believe that that's what the district is gonna ask you to do. So I think we're gonna continue to work on that partnership, and we're gonna continue to keep you informed as we continue to have this data grow, and as we continue to evaluate. And then, as Dr. Bob said, this for us is not an end. It's just a continuing the partnership.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Borden.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And, you know, I want to say thank you to Marcy and Miranda. Honestly, since I've been on council, I can't think of a time that we've had such good data and such information in front of us. It's been, just the remarkable change within the past year has been awesome. And that's just a true testament, in my opinion, of, you know, your willingness to listen, and your willingness to collaborate, and to the best of your ability, try to solve a problem that's not even really yours to solve, in my opinion. And that brings me to my next issue. I don't, I guess I don't have any questions, but I do have some more comments. And, you know, the state legislature, before I go there, as I talk to people, as I talk to people, their number-one concern, or their number-one B concern, is education, and how we fund schools, and their property taxes, and how much that goes to, you know, that comes, goes to West Data, and depends on, I guess, the property, but it can get up towards 30%. It's huge. It's a big number. And honestly, in my opinion, the state legislature needs to have a seat at this table. They can't continue to not do anything, and putting school districts in a position where they just have to figure it out, or put Band-Aids on things, or put the burden on how much this costs on taxpayers. If we want true tax relief, the best way to do it is to start funding schools properly. That's my opinion. And there's a lot of different ways we can talk about that. But most importantly, I think anyone would agree with this, that the state legislature needs to start reinvesting in schools, and they need to start, you know, reinvesting in kiddos, and they need to start reinvesting in educators. Because if they don't, it's just gonna get worse, and it's gonna get worse, and it's gonna get worse. And as I talk to folks from Meridian, this is their concern, and I see inaction, and it's a problem. You know, we need, most importantly, we need funding mechanisms that communities and districts can rely on. Because it's the inconsistency of, I mean, there's so much you can do. You can have all of the best data in front of you, and we can crunch until the cows come home, all right? But the, it's moving. It's super granular, and we'll never have an exact path to where we want to go. We have to somewhat guess. And again, I think that this is, this can be resolved. And so, but I just want, this is me pontificating, but I just want you guys to know that you guys are doing the best job that you can. And honestly, that's what we expect. And thank you for that. One minute and 52 seconds. I think it boils down to, as well, is just a policy issue, really. And maybe that's, because you're gonna get us to the data. We're gonna get to the final number, and we're gonna have to make a decision. And that's when decisions are needed, need to get made. And the decision that's needed to get made is, do we fix the problem? Do we fix the problem with the schools in a preparatory way, knowing that the growth is coming, and the lots are there, and the development is, you know, the homes are going vertical, all right? So do we take care, do we ask for money now, and prepare ourselves for what is going to come? Or do we wait until there's an issue, and then we ask people, you know, the citizens for, have them pay for a bond? And it's a policy discussion. I don't expect you guys to answer that question, but it's a discussion. I think that we, as a council, are gonna have to, it's gonna help out, I guess, with our decisions, because I know there's some that, you know, have questions about, hey, what does this look like now? And how can we approve these new developments when we don't, when we know that there's gonna be an issue, you know, three to five years down the line? So maybe a policy discussion is in place, and what that looks like, and how we approach growth and bonds and new schools in that regard. 16 seconds. No questions.
No questions, no response needed. But thank you, Councilman Borden. Councilman Pro.
Thank you very much. Thank you for going through how these, the information is generated. That's super helpful. My assumption is that this will then be used to put together a plan for how you are gonna plan for growth in the district, and how you're going to utilize the multiple options that you've mentioned. I still see this huge chasm between having the information, and when the information's gonna be utilized to make decisions. So is, is the staff planning on recommending to the school board a series of policies on when certain options are triggered? For example, you know, what sets the benchmark for when you decide to move a boundary? What is, you know, is it based on a certain student generation rate in a certain geographic area? Is it based on a school being over-capacity for a certain number of years? Mountain View's already over-capacity, so we see that as like an emergent situation. When we get letters that say there's 2,300 students, and there's 2175 capacity, we're assuming you're already over-capacity. So what I really want to know is, is what's gonna be the triggers for each of these options that you're sharing with us? And how are we gonna know when those things are triggered, such that there's going to be an improvement to the program or building capacities? So is there gonna be a set of standards that are created by the district that says, when this happens, this is what will go into play? We will go before the board, and we will make decisions financially, or we will make decisions for boundary adjustments, or we will make decisions for portables? What's that gonna look like? Because until that happens, I don't have any sense of, it doesn't reprieve my concern about the growth district-wide, and in very specific areas of our city where we're seeing capacity concerns. So, you, we have residents coming to us at every meeting, saying, the district is saying that there's space, but our students are saying there's not space. Our children are saying there's not space. And it seems like that there isn't, that, I'm not figuring out how to reconcile this to things for myself. So what, when are the benchmarks gonna be created? How are they gonna be looked at? And, you know, what are they gonna be, are they gonna be put in place by the board? I just, I don't, it's beyond me that you have a district the size, much, much larger than many of the cities in the state of Idaho, that does not have a plan that is based on some sense of solid actions. So I realize that the district can't, cannot help some of the funding mechanisms that they have options for, as Councilman Borden recommended. There's a lot of things that the district cannot guarantee. They can't guarantee the passage of bonds. They can't guarantee, you know, that build-out is gonna be faster or slower. There's a lot of variables. But there are some things you can do by saying, when we get to this point in a particular geographic area, particular school, particular grid, particular facility, this is the action we're gonna take. I don't understand why the district doesn't have a holistic process to be able to say, when we get to this point, this is the action we're gonna take. Is that something the district's gonna work on? And how long is it gonna take to implement?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that was a lot of questions, so I will try to answer them as best as I can. So what I am gonna tell you is that part of our process with the facility plan is going to look at that. So what we're gonna be doing is evaluating our enrollment projections, and then we're gonna be looking at our response to that, which may include bonding. It will include identification of if we need to put a portable, based on what year two or year three is gonna look like, specifically for what we anticipate student enrollment. So I think you're gonna start to see that. The plan is, right now, we are putting that together, and then it will go to our board first. And so my hope and expectation is that by the March 14th board meeting, is that we'll be able to start having some of that conversation. Right now, we have some architects working on plan sites, and what those things look like. So I think that will give you some tangible ability to be able to see, okay, here's when we see a projection, here's where the district is gonna try to come up with a response. Some of which we control, some of which we can't, right? We can try to build a plan of what we're gonna ask our taxpayers for. We can start saying, this is what a bond would look like. I mean, then we can walk through those steps. As far as the, I don't want to cut, as far as the policy decisions, I think that will be a discussion that will have to happen at the board level, that we can then also start. I think a lot of this data that we're gathering, and the things we're doing, is getting us to the point to where we can start having a lot of those conversations. So I think you'll see this conversation continue, along with the policy, along with just the facility plan along the way.
Okay, thank you. So I think we have a few more. Do you guys have time for a few more, if we have any one-off conversation, one-off more questions from council members? I think we can go for about another nine minutes, if that works, so we can take a break from that standpoint. So with that, Councilman Pro, I know you're gonna have more. Why don't you, if you got one more in you, then we'll see if there's any other council members that want to do a follow-up question, but.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I just have one more question. Regarding boundary adjustments, there have been a lot of attempts at doing that, both district-wide and in individual schools in the last 10 years or so, many of which have been unsuccessful because of the parent-led boundary committees. I'm curious if you can comment on whether the district is willing to consider adjusting how they go through that process, so that there's a more, so the boundaries can get adjusted in a timely way. And unfortunately, I agree, it's hard when you have students that don't want to move. But, for example, Rocky Mountain is 600 over-capacity, but Meridian is 400 under-capacity. Why is it that way, when you make some boundary adjustments, and now all of a sudden, your schools are more evened out? It's a political thing, to be honest, and I don't think it's benefiting our district.
I don't know if I can really answer your question 100%. It's, the board, the board created this attendance area policy, and that's, like, I understand what you're saying, because I giggle, because I did this last attendance area, and I was thinking, I think I could just whip this up real quick. But the policy states, so I can't speak towards, I can't speak to the board, because they just created and voted on this policy. That would just, that would be a board decision.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I just want to say thank you. I know I'm kind of harsh sometimes, but it's because I care. The biggest thing I'm taking away from this, that I'm worried about, is a timing mismatch. So we have 13,000 approved housing units coming in Meridian alone. Starz got their stuff going on. They've got one that's like 1,500 units. And, you know, Dr. Bob was great about saying, hey, we'll throw up the red flag when kids are sitting on the floor, and we can't physically serve them. But the problem is, when we turn this bigot off here, all those 13,000 housing units are still gonna deliver to you. And so my question is, is there a way to improve either when you throw up the flag, and tell us there's a problem, or a way to get ahead of this, and tell me the ways that we can be proactive together to get ahead of it? Because I'm very concerned that at the time a crisis will happen, that no changes can realistically be made at that time.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I think yes. I think the way to really look at that is, as we've been sharing, and we've shared with you lots of data and the projections we're running, we're gonna need a little bit of time to analyze where we think that is, and how it is we're doing. And I know time is not always a luxury that we have. But part of our ability to be able to raise that red flag and give you data is for us to also be able to analyze, how are we feeling with our projections? Is the community coming in at the same way? Do we have expectations of, this is what we anticipated a student generation rate was gonna be? How is it actually panning out? And so I think the way we get through that process, as we continue to analyze the data, is we continue to partner and communicate together, right? And so that, I know, doesn't just answer every question and give a point in time, but it does allow us to continue to share that information, and for us to identify those things for you. And so we're gonna be able to do our best to share that data with you at the same time. Then we're gonna also be doing our analysis to be able to see, is there changes in mobility? So to answer the question that I think was asked about if a student ages out, right, that's some data analysis we're also gonna be doing. So just other ways that we're, we're at this point now where we have all of this data. And so now we're able to use it, but we're also gonna be able to take some time to analyze and ensure that everything we're matching is lying out.
Mr. Mayor, I have one more.
Councilman Schrader.
I think part of what I'm struggling with is, you're giving us information about approving it, to help us, as one of many factors, about whether we should approve a development. And I'm having a really hard time with making decisions on that basis, because I know you have all the tools in your toolkit. And I just, I already assume a way that you'll use all the tools. But I guess what I'm worried about is more, when we have, if we have a district-wide capacity issue, where those tools, what is the limit of those tools? It's kind of what I'm trying to understand. And I guess I would just highly encourage you, if possible, to aggregate your data and try to look at it. And maybe, I mean, maybe we're missing something, you know, for example, if you feel that you're losing share to education alternatives, and that's one of the things that's driving this, why Liz's projections are incorrect. I'd love you to tell me the reasons I'm wrong, right? But for now, for me, just some feedback, just seeing, okay, here's how many you've approved. It's gonna be over-capacity. That, in isolation, to me, is not a good driver of a decision, whether or not to approve a development. I just, for me personally, feel like we need to pull up a lot farther from that. But I do think, if you could, if there's one piece of feedback for the letter specifically, where you describe the amount of kids that are going to come in, I would highly encourage you to put the timeframe of when you feel that they're coming, so we can understand that. Just having a number in isolation, like, oh, there's 1,000 kids coming in this one school when fully built out, that doesn't tell me a whole lot about when we might, if I thought, well, we're gonna be for sure 200 students over-capacity in the next two years, that would put a different urgency level behind that, if that makes sense. Thanks.
Counsel, any other questions or comments? Then with that, we'll say thank you, Jonathan Marcy. Appreciate your time and interest. I don't think it'll be the last conversation we have. I don't think it'll be the last conversation we have on this topic, but it's a good, uh, starting point and perhaps early will be an update by the time we get the joint meeting set with, with the board to have next step conversations. Okay. Thank you. Council, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
A move will adjourn the work session.
A motion to adjourn, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose nae.
Aye.
Council, we'll call the meeting to order for the record. It is Tuesday, February 22nd, 2022 at 6:01 PM. We will begin this evening's meeting with roll call attendance.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilwoman Schrader.
Here.
Councilman Burn.
Here.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Here.
Councilman Borden.
Here.
Councilman Hoagland.
Here.
Here. Next item is the Pledge of Allegiance. If you'd all please rise and join us in the pledge. Our next item is a community invocation, which will be delivered by Pastor Drake, Troy Drake, this evening. If you'd all please join us in the invocation or take this as a moment of silence and reflection. Pastor.
Mayor, Councilmembers, pray with me. Lord God, I was just reminded in Psalm four that it says, there are many who say, who will show us any good? And that's a little short sighted, God, as you know, that there's plenty of good. We thank you for this great country that we have, that we have this despite all of its faults. Lord, we have freedom in our country and and we can pursue life and liberty here. We, Lord, thank you for our state in this great that we live in and and God, I just pray for our first responders here tonight, the people who keep us safe, the police officers and firefighters and paramedics. Lord, we pray that not only do they help us, but you would keep them out of harm's way tonight and and, Lord, it's cold. And so we're thinking about those who are homeless and who need things. Lord, here we are tonight and we we have food in our stomachs and a warm place and and people who love us and we just our heart breaks for those who don't have those things. So we just pray, God, that they would find their place to a church or a or a shelter or a friend or a relative or someone who could provide safety and help for them. And of course, last but not least, Lord, pray for this this council meeting tonight, the business that they will cover, that you would give these servants for us wisdom and that they would be able to, you know, accomplish what you set before them. And we just appreciate him, God, and pray that you would impart your grace upon them. And we pray all these things in your name, Lord. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pastor.
Next item much is the adoption of the agenda.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I know we don't have any changes tonight for the agenda, so I move approval of the adoption of the agenda as published.
Second. I have a motion of second to approve the agenda's published. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay? The ayes have it and the agenda is agreed to. Is correct, do we have anyone sent up under public forum?
Mr. Mayor, we did not.
Okay. Then with that, we will move on to item one this evening, which is a proclamation for Black History Month. Councilman Burn, would you like to join me at the podium for this? And we'll invite President Taylor from the N double A C P to join us at the podium as well. So we're here tonight to do a proclamation for Black History Month. And I asked Council President Burn to join me down here because this is really about the relationship that we've been building together with President Taylor, members of the N double A C P and others in the community of whether it's the Hispanic Chamber or others following the actions from a couple of years ago. And so it's really born a friendship, a partnership, a relationship, one that's overdue for coffee, as President Taylor reminded me earlier from that standpoint. But doing the proclamation, we did our first one last year for Black History Month, and we're happy to do it again. So with that, we'll go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas during Black History Month, we honor and celebrate the many achievements and contributions made by African Americans to our economic, cultural, spiritual and political development. And whereas Black History Month grew out of the establishment in nineteen twenty six of Negro History Week by Carter G Woodson and the Association for the Study of African American Life and History. And whereas the two thousand twenty two national theme for the observance is black health and wellness, which considers activities, rituals and initiatives the black communities have done to be well. And whereas the observance of Black History Month encourages our community to understand and acknowledge the lives of all of its African American citizens and live up to our democratic ideals. And whereas we are able to live better lives and have a brighter future thanks to the contributions that have been made of African Americans in our community, state and nation. Therefore, I, Mayor Robert E. Simison, hereby proclaim February twenty second is Black History Month. In the city of Meridian, encourage the residents of our community and communities across the country to learn more about and celebrate the diverse heritage and culture of African Americans and continue our efforts to create a world that is more just, peaceful and prosperous for all. This twenty second day of February twenty twenty two. With that, President Taylor, invite you to say any words and then we'll do some pictures after that.
Praise the Lord. Thank the mayor and this and this deliberate body of this city for your recognition. Some of you may not know, but I was here a few years ago to receive this proclamation. At that time, I spoke in the fact that Meridian was the first city, my knowledge, in the state of Idaho to acknowledge or have Black History Month in this city. In my religious efforts, I deal a lot on faith. So I think it took a lot of faith for the mayor and this deliberate body to step out and become the first to recognize Black History Month in this great state of Idaho, even though Idaho has a state recognized. I would like to report to you tonight that as I speak, there is another city in Idaho decided to step out faith with you, headed to the city Caldwell. It's amazing that we look at what happened a few years ago to simply be a simple recognition to the African American community. It was a great step. It was an ambitious step. And I'm sure a step that was not viewed by all. But all came together to make it happen. And you did it again this year. And somewhere along the line, someone else in Idaho got a message and felt that, why don't we do the same? And I am honored, truly honored of my friendship with the mayor. Craig here, he knew he gets me into all kind of trouble. But then I'd hear the mayor say he gets into everybody's troubles that he's around, that you would come again and ask me to be here. And as I close, I want to leave you with this thought in mind. What if? What if the African American contribution had been recognized and celebrated during those years that it was happened? Then we would not have to have a month to celebrate African American history because it would have been American history. In fact, that is what it is, American history. And we wouldn't have to study critical race theories, things that seem to divide the country while we in the city of Meridian are trying to bring the community together. So what if? And again, I want to thank you, Mayor. For bringing this to your deliberate body. And I can assure you, the African American community in Meridian and all over Idaho. Thank you for that step of faith.
Sorry, Mayor, I have a cough. But, you know, I'm it's a privilege to stand before you today. And honestly, I would I would call it from a great leader in our in our U S history, John Lewis, he I think he called it good trouble. That's what that's what you were talking about, right? With all kidding aside, you know, President Taylor is just not a true leader in the African American community. He's a true leader in Meridian. And the friendship that we've been able to develop over the last couple of years has been awesome. And I really truly appreciate you and the others who we meet.
Jared, Jared Baber.
Yeah, absolutely, Willie.
Willie Baber.
And Vic and and it's you guys, it's just, it's been an absolute pleasure. And I thank you from the bottom of my heart for all that you do for, you know, the the all to talk about all the accomplishments of the African American community in our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Council. With that, we'll move on to item number two this evening, which is Resolution number twenty two dash twenty three fifteen, which is appointing Patrick Grace to seat six of the Meridian Planning and Zoning Commission. As I mentioned when we did the previous appointments to the other commissions, including planning, zoning, and I had teased that I would be bringing Patrick's name before you do replace Bill Castinelli on the commission, who I attended his last meeting last week, and he provided his notice. But when we were going through with Commissioner Seale, we felt that Patrick would give a good rounding out of the commission with the loss of Rhonda with Bill Castinelli, both from, you know, it fit with the commission, location where he lived, knowledge of the city, involvement in his local H O A of Paramount and in that area. Being an attorney, I think, Councilman Borden can agree or disagree, but I think it brings a a nice skill set to plan and zoning that can help them with their processes and, I mean, those decisions. But it was really the answers. I don't want to give away my questions that I ask future applicants because I don't want people tailoring their answers picking up by what I say. But, you know, needless to say, the comments that he made about negotiation skills, his views on purple personal property rights versus community rights, how he approaches issues and challenges that he faces, that I think he'll just bring great addition to the P and Z so they can effectively engage and communicate back in the back and forth as necessary with our community as applications come forward. So he is in the room this evening, but he doesn't get to speak until after he's accepted the job or after you have agreed to give him the job, unless you have any questions for him. So with that, I put this before you for your consideration.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hope.
I moved, we approved Resolution number twenty two dash twenty three fifteen, appointing Patrick Grace to seat six of the Meridian Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second.
I have a motion of second to approve Resolution number twenty two dash twenty three fifteen. Is there any discussion? If not, on favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed nay? The ayes have it and the resolution is agreed to. Patrick, would you like to come forward and make any comments?
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. I just wanted to thank you all very much for the opportunity to serve. I've lived in Meridian for about sixteen years now, and it's a great community. And over the last couple of years or so, I've been thinking about ways I can give back and applied for a few positions on some commissions. And this one came up, and I was pleased to talk to the mayor about that and hopefully bring some of my skill set and experience to bear and for the good of the of the community. So I appreciate it very much. I'm looking forward to giving back. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. With that, Council, we will move on to our public hearings for this evening. First up is item number three, a public hearing for Inglewood Commercial H twenty twenty one dash zero zero nine five. We will open this public hearing with staff comments from Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the Council. Sorry, got me on the commission now. I'm filling in for Sonia tonight. She had an obligation. She cannot get out of, so I'm covering this project for her. So be a little nice on this one. You can bash me on the next one. As noted, this is for Inglewood Commercial. It is for a development agreement modification. The site consists of approximately nine acres of land located at the northeast corner of Eagle and Victory Roads. It's zone C C and R fifteen with the C C zoning being adjacent to Eagle Road. It is designated as mixed use community on the future land use designation. The applicant proposes to modify the existing D A that is currently in effect for the property, simply to update the concept plan approved for the overall development. The existing plan depicts a mix of uses, including a residential care facility with single family attached homes for independent living on the east portion of the site in the R fifteen zoning district with an office pad and three retail commercial pads along Eagle Road on the west half of the site, where about the western third. No changes to the retirement community or the two retail commercial buildings at the southwest southwest corner of the site are proposed, except to enlarge the northern building pad and include office as a potential use. In fact, the senior living facility minimally, I'm not entirely sure about the attached homes, but minimally, the senior living facility is already under construction. The pad at the very southwest corner of the site is planned to develop with a drive through restaurant use, more than likely a coffee shop with indoor and outdoor seating. Three story office building that is proposed to be removed because there's not adequate space for the building. There is a sewer easement in the middle of the roadway and through the building, which is depicted on the plan. The daycare is proposed in place of the northern retail pad. The applicant's narrative states that walkways are planned from the daycare to the senior living as part of the plan for the daycares for the children to go and visit some of the seniors as well. In the existing development, no, sorry, the proposed development plan includes a mix of residential and commercial uses demonstrates compliance with the mixed use community designation in the comp plan for the site. He proposed uses will provide employment opportunities and services for those living nearby. I didn't also mention that the office pad shown on the existing concept plan would not be able to be parked for our standards, which is another reason why they're proposing to remove it. It was a little ambitious in the original development plan. Existing D A will ensure supportive and proportion and proportional public and or quasi-public spaces, including but not limited to park closets, outdoor gathering areas, open space, etc. That will be provided within the mixed use and or the commercial component of the site. Staff does recommend approval of this. There is only one piece of written testimony, which was from the applicant representative, and there is they are in agreement with the staff report. I will stand for any questions.
Thank you, Joe. Council, any questions for staff? Is the applicant here? Do you have anything you'd like to add at this time? You'd like to come forward? Say your name and address for the record. We recognize for fifteen minutes.
Evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm Jim Peterson, address six six zero nine Old Mill Circle, Salt Lake City, Utah. So when we purchased this property, it's been a few years ago now. So when we purchased this property, uh, it's been a few years ago now. Our, uh, main motive was to, uh, build and develop a, a continuum of care, kind of an age and place concept, senior living. Like a lot of infills, we had quite a few challenges with this, but I think that, uh, as a mixed-use site, it's, uh, it's shaping up really well. So just a little bit, I don't know. So if you look at the existing plan, um, uh, we put the senior facility in the middle, put the, uh, cottage homes, basically twin homes to the east to buffer between that eastern neighborhood. Um, so all that part of the site is under construction and will be opening in a couple of months and, uh, it, it's showing great demand. So we're, we're leasing about twice as fast as our, our schedule was. So that's all, all stays the same and there's no changes to that. Honestly, we didn't put a lot of thought into the commercial part. We knew we had to do commercial along Eagle and, uh, the original development great, um, agreement, I, I think we were, yeah, definitely a little too ambitious with the three-story office building and three more office pads. There is quite a few easements here, too. We have the McDonald Canal going through the property. We have an easement, uh, directly in from the, uh, from the, the main street off of Eagle. So it comes straight through, actually goes through the middle of that building. Yes, there's the easement there, 15-foot easement on the north border. And then, um, there will be another easement to connect the parking lot of, uh, what we plan on developing in case the property to the north, um, gets developed commercial. The city wanted to have a, um, an ability to, to connect those commercial, uh, parcels, which completely makes sense. Um, so what we have so far, yeah, so to fit all this in and meet our parking, our 25-foot setbacks all the way around, our open space, you know, it, it wasn't even, even close. So what we are proposing to do is to, uh, get rid of the three-story office building. If you remember, I was here a little while, a few months ago, and we, uh, got approval for the, uh, corner coffee shop Starbucks use. And, um, so that stays the same. The pad right to the north of it, that's small. I don't know what the use will be there yet. Hopefully, I don't know, bank, retail. And then the northern part, um, we have that under contract, um, for a daycare. And that's, that's another change in the development agreements. So the two things in development agreement that we need to modify is get rid of the three-story building. And it doesn't spell out the used daycare in our, in our current DA. It's a retail professional, um, restaurant, right? But it doesn't spell out daycare. Um, so that gives us our, our mixed use and, yeah, we'd have connecting paths throughout the, uh, throughout the whole development and, yeah, hoping for any questions.
Thank you. Council, any questions? Thank you very much. Don't. Did we miscorrect? Do we have anyone sign up in advance on the site?
Mr. Mayor, we do not.
Okay, is there anybody in the audience who'd like to provide testimony on this item? Or anybody online that would like to provide testimony? If you're online, use the raise your hand feature. If you're in the audience who'd like to provide testimony, go ahead and come up to the podium at this time. Seeing no one online or in the audience, is, would you like to make any additional final comments? Okay, then, Council, we will turn it over to you for questions, comments, or actions.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holton.
A question for Joe. Um, he, he had mentioned that the, it, it, the concept plan, we show daycare, but it, it's a retail office facility of some sort. So that's, it's not required to be the daycare in this DA.
Councilman Hoagland is, my, my understanding is it's not that specific, which is fine. It's an allowed use in the CC, or well, I'd say conditional use in the CC zoning district, which I believe they've already submitted for that, and they're just waiting for this DA mod to be, uh, moved forward in order to change the concept plan overall, not necessarily the use proposed.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perrow.
Yes. If you have a question for the applicant, please.
Okay. He's coming forward.
Thank you. So all in all, I, I don't have any, um, concerns regarding the, the two proposed changes to the development agreement, but I'm just curious, um, what the integration will be like for pedestrian activity for the, um, subdivision that's to the east. It's a pretty significant subdivision there in Southern Farm. So how will this kind of integrate into the surrounding residential there on the east side? I don't see any walkways that are coming over, any information about that.
Yeah, so we don't have the ability to, I don't believe, uh, have a walkway from the, uh, development directly to the neighborhood to the east, with the exception of the sidewalk that we'll be putting in along, uh, Victory Road. So for people in that subdivision, uh, to the east, to get to our development, you'd have to go along the sidewalk on Victory Road. That's the only connection that we're planning at this point.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Follow-up.
Council, yes, Councilwoman Pro.
Thank you. Can you take us really quickly through the circulation, uh, with the daycare? I, the entrance that's there on, along Eagle Road on the south side of the daycare, is that a right-in, right-out? And how will that traffic flow?
Yes, off of, uh, Eagle Road, that is a right-in, right-out only.
And so will individuals come in, um, and then they'll come in that way to, to pick up from the daycare and then exit out the side street then?
Oh, they can exit onto Eagle and make a right, or they could drive through the parking lot and connect onto Titanium, and that's a full access.
Okay, so there isn't concern about them flowing through near the, the senior living facility accidentally or?
No, that's why we have the access. Originally, we had the access to the north of the facility. And, uh, years ago, before we, uh, did the development of the facility, we moved it to the south, um, kind of for that purpose. And, uh, the other thing that, uh, the city has really paid attention to is, um, you'll see Titanium will be a, a through street. So right now, it's just dead-ending to the north of our property. And also, the parking lot, we're going to dead-end into the property to the north of us, because it's only a matter of time until that gets developed, which, uh, traffical, that'll give more option for traffic to flow that way.
Thank you.
Councilman Schrader.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, Councilwoman Perrow did ask a lot of my questions, but could, I see here where there's like a kind of covered parking. It says parking garage, but I was just hoping, could you walk me through the pedestrian connectivity, the existing concept plan called out, um, some crosswalks? But is there going to be a, maybe walk me through the pedestrian plan?
Yeah, I, I wish that was on the site. I'm just noticing that that's not on this plan. There is, so where you see that long parking garage, that's what it is, is a garage. They are separated. And there is a, a walkway through there, and then there's a walkway to the north, along the north property. Law, not, I shouldn't say the line, but yes, along there. And then there is, uh, walking to the south also. There's, there's connections. There's, there's quite a few connections through there around the site.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. Um, I appreciate you answering those questions. And I appreciate, um, of course, could change, but appreciate that there's a daycare located here. I know that's a huge need right now in our community.
Yeah, that, that's what I hear. I mean, I know they've done the studies and same as when we did the senior living studies. It's amazing demand for both, and they, they work well together. I mean, side note is, is, uh, where my kids go to school in Salt Lake is right beside a senior place, and they connect a lot. Like they go over there and, you know, preschool and stuff, do sing for them and do events. And it, uh, it's a positive thing for, for both. Yeah.
Joe, did you have something you wanted to add?
Mr. Mayor, I was just going to add a little bit to the connectivity and the, or actually the planned connectivity. Not just along Victory, but as the applicant noted, uh, Titanium will end up being moved north and connect all the way through to the north, but also to publisher here. Um, these were already existing back fences, so you can't have pedestrian connectivity through private property there. So there will be a, another pedestrian and vehicular connection, should this property or these properties redevelop in the future, which, um, my understanding is there's been a few pre-application meetings on this site already. So there's something maybe coming down the pipeline to help with the overall connectivity of pedestrians as well as vehicular.
Thank you, Joe.
You're welcome.
Council, any additional questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
I'm happy to kick us off and move that we close the public hearing.
I have a motion a second to close the public hearing. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, no. The ayes have it and the public hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
Happy to make a motion on this. I think it, that the, the changes may be more realistic than what was originally envisioned, but it feels like it's a good fit for this part of our community. So I would move that after considering all staff, applicant, and public testimony, that we approve file number H 2021 dash 0095 as presented in the staff report for today's hearing date.
I have a motion a second to approve item H 2021 dash 0095. Is there any discussion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Schrader.
Aye.
Perrow.
Aye.
Thornton.
Aye.
Hoagland.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries, and the item is agreed to. Thank you. Have a good evening. Next item up is a public hearing for Lenin Point Community, H 2021 dash 0071. We will open this public hearing with staff comments.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The next project before you for Lenin Point Community requests annexation zoning, preliminary plat, and conditional use permit. They also submitted for private street application, which is an administrative approval. And the director has offered approval of that private street. The site consists of 8.8 acres of land currently zoned RUT. It's located at the southeast corner of Linder and Eustick. Does not have any application history with the city currently, other than this. And the future land use designation on the site is also mixed-use community, which allows residential uses with a density, gross density of six to 15 units per acre. The request for annexation is for 10.4 acres of land, two acres of CC, and 8.3 acres of R15. The additional acreage accounts for the, we require acreage to go to the center line of the road. The preliminary plat consists of 44 building lots, 43 single-family residential and one multifamily residential lot. And, uh, one commercial lot and two common lots on the 8.8 acres of land in the CC and R15 zoning districts. The conditionally used permit before you tonight is for a multifamily development that consists of a total of 18 units on 1.18 acres in the R15 zoning district, the requested R15. Again, the applicant has received the privacy approval in a portion of the project. The subject site has existing city Meridian zoning in all directions around it. The site is directly bordered to its north and west by arterial streets. Development of the surrounding areas are ongoing with detached single-family to the east and south, increasing creek subdivision. Multiple office buildings are being constructed to the north across Eustick Road, uh, within the CC zoning district. The CC zoning district to the west contains an ambulance service, uh, on the west side of Linder Road. In addition to the existing land uses around the property, the subject site contains two major waterways, which you can see more clearly on the map on the right aerial. You have this big one here as well as this one. Believe this is the Kellogg Drain, and this is the lateral, but I can't remember without another map. Because of the two waterways, almost the entire property is within a floodplain. The applicant is proposing to pipe the drain and reroute it to make more area of the site usable, as well as provide open space and pathways in the southwest corner of the site and along the west boundary. The proposed land uses are attached, single-family, townhomes, uh, multifamily, and commercial. These land uses are consistent with those outlined in the mixed-use community, future land use designation, both in its definition and the contemplated uses within its purpose statement, especially when they are properly integrated with internally, as well as with the surrounding uses, surrounding areas. Overall, staff does find the proposed site design offers appropriate integration. Specifically, the applicant has proposed their multifamily residential along Eustick and the commercial buildings to the hard corner of Eustick and Linder, which places the most intense uses closest to their arterials, which is generally planning 101. Therefore, the single-family uses are proposed in the remaining area of the site, which makes up approximately 70% of the site. The applicant is proposing the single-family portion of the site as all two-story, except for the five-unit townhomes along Linder, which would be these right here. In addition to the site design and proposed uses, certain densities are required to be met for residential projects within the mixed-use community designation, again, six to 15. Based on the 8.8 acres, the proposed project is approximately 7.3 units per acre. If you take out the commercial area, it bumps it up to a little over eight. Being at the low end of the gross density allowed. Overall, staff finds that the project is consistent with the comp plan, as well as the future land use designation. Staff did recommend that the units along the east boundary, which is shown on this, uh, map, that they be front-loaded. They were originally proposed as alley-loaded utilizing the public street as an alley rather than a front street. So there used to be a walkway here. They removed that as recommended by staff, and these are just going to be backyards, abutting backyards, which should be more private than a walkway, and people trying to enter their front doors. The following site data is also relevant when reviewing the preliminary plat overall. The residential uses are allowed uses within the R15 zoning district, and future commercial uses will be analyzed when those future applications are submitted. Again, they are requesting CC zoning, which is not the general commercial, a few more restrictions in that zone. All dimensional standards are met with the proposed preliminary plat. The commercial and the multifamily meets all the dimensional standards, as well as all of the building lots within the single-family area of the site. The, in terms of the multifamily specific use standards, each multifamily unit is proposed as a single-story unit within two buildings. It appears there are nine buildings in each unit, so three, three, and three. There's a three-story building. The multi-units have been, the multifamily units have been revised. So the, the amount of private open space has not been confirmed, but the previous one had more than what was required of the 80 square feet. And with the future certificate of zoning compliance, staff will ensure that those, the minimum 80 square feet is met. For the 18 units, at least two amenities from two categories in code are required. The applicant has proposed a shared plaza, really two at this point, one here and one here. And public art, which is in this shared plaza here, therefore exceeding the minimum code requirements. Overall, for the plat, a minimum of 10% qualified open space is required. This is from the old code because it was submitted prior to the recent update. Based on the proposed plat of 8.75 acres, a minimum of 0.88 acres of qualified open space should be provided. According to the applicant's revised open space exhibit, approximately 1.7 acres of qualified open space is proposed, which is approximately 19 and a half percent, almost twice the minimum amount. The majority of this open space consists of the large open space in the southwest corner of the site, the central mew, and half of the arterial street benders, which are allowed to count per code. Again, this area vastly exceeds the minimum UDC requirements. Staff finds that this proposed open space is adequate in both its amount as well as its location. Also, based on the area of the plat, a minimum of one qualified amenity is required to be provided. The applicant proposed three qualified amenities. A 10-foot multi-use pathway, a children's play structure, and a fenced dog park. This is one of the changes that was also made at the commission hearing or between the commission hearings. Move the dog park here. They're going to connect a multi-use pathway in this location as well. And they extended it all the way up along the west boundary when they were not required to. And all of the pedestrian connectivity through here is also important. The proposed amenities therefore exceed the minimum UDC standards. The applicant is proposing, as I noted, pedestrian facilities throughout the entire site with attached sidewalks, micropaths, and the multi-use pathway. All these facilities connect and integrate throughout the site and offer more than adequate pedestrian circulation. All proposed sidewalks and pathways meet UDC requirements as well. The project exceeds the off-street parking requirements for the submitted plans. Future building permits for the single family will verify compliance of off-street parking as each building permit comes in. Guest parking has been proposed along the private street segment of the project as well. And, uh, the applicant has a better exhibit than I do to show that. Access to the site is from the, uh, adjacent. Access to the site is from the adjacent arterials as well as the existing sub streets of the property. Linder Road, there is an access proposed. There's an existing access that's to remain a twenty-five foot wide driveway connection. Just here, it aligns with the access on the west side. It is a temporary full access per ACHD because the access on the west side for the ambulance service is a full access. So if my understanding is that if they limit the access to one side, they will limit to both and they don't intend to limit the ambulance service. The access to Eustick is the same, but it will be it is already going to be restricted as a right and right out only. The other access points to the site are from existing public street connections. West Pebblestone along the north, I believe. And then North Zion Park Avenue from the south. So the this segment of the project is the public street. And that also meets all ACHD requirements is thirty-three feet wide within forty-seven feet of right away with a five-foot attached sidewalks. And then the private street portion of the site is off of this public road comes through here and here. This could be not necessarily a private street, but a multifamily commercial drive aisle here as well as off of Linder and another drive aisle here to connect to help any cut through traffic that instead of having to go through the commercial and into the residential, they can come through here. That was another change made by the applicant. The applicant is proposing three detached, single-family homes that are in the very southeast corner of the site and near the previous area of the dog park. These are accessed off of the common driver, at least two of them are, but the other one accessed off of the public road. This also complies with the UDC standards. Since the commission hearing, there have been no changes because there was the part project was continued from one hearing to another. And all those changes were made between those two hearings. The commission recommended approval to the council on this. At those hearings, there's a lot of discussion about the proposed multifamily units adjacent to the existing family, single family homes to the east. The proposed height disparity across the property in general with just two-story being the consistent and the property to the east being a mix of two and one story. There was some general desire to construct the property with detached, single-family homes only. There's concerns with the general increase of traffic in the vicinity with additional homes and or units. Furthermore, they discussed the location of the dog park, the kind of commercial that is proposed, or I should say anticipated in the corner, as well as the viability of the commercial with no direct access. There's general agreement that the proposed changes to the site plan are a benefit to the project and help with integration as well as conformity to the comprehensive plan. There was still concern with the proposed attached units along the east boundary, but they did not commission did not make any recommendations to change that. Since the commission hearing, there have been additional letters from a member of the public noting the same issues that the commission discussed as well as reiterating traffic concerns and a desire to keep this area a single family rather than mixed use. I will stand for any questions at this point.
Thank you, Joe. Counsel, questions for staff?
Mayor.
Counsel and pro.
Thank you. Joe, I'm struggling with seeing this as mixed use community versus mixed use neighborhood. I feel like it has a lot more of the mixed use neighborhood identity. So can you help me understand how you went through analyzing that as staff? I just, to me, mixed use community is a lot more heavier use than what's being proposed. And it larger commercial buildings, maybe more of a percentage of the area as commercial than residential. So I just, I'm not seeing this as matching what we have on our comprehensive plan.
Council and pro, that's a great question. It's largely what it comes down to is just the size of the property and then the hindrance of the irrigation facilities. When you have eight point eight acres and a large area is not even going to be able to be touched, we don't anticipate them meeting the three uses on eight eight point eight acres anyways. That's usually generally considered a little bit small to try to meet all three uses, but they have, they've exceeded that, including the commercial. In addition, we we appreciate that they put it along the arterials rather than adjacent to the residential. You'd be surprised, the plans that we've had submitted on this site, this is at least the third applicant that I've discussed this site with. Granted, this applicant actually moved forward with something and it is the better of the three. It it is not always cut and dry when it comes to looking at the mixed use designations. I do agree, this is probably more in alignment with mixed use neighborhood than mixed use commercial. And it's especially because of the site constraints. I could definitely understand a desire for more commercial here. But as with anything, when you put commercial, neighbors usually hate that, whether it's good for the community or not. And that's unfortunate, but it generally is what happens. Commission did discuss that, maybe even flipping the multifamily in the commercial or adding more commercial along Eustick. That probably would increase and cut through traffic further to the east because they access with increasing creek. I can't remember the street name. Probably is better access for those utilizing the commercial. Hope that answers your question.
Mr. Mayor.
Additional questions for counsel and pro.
Sorry. It does answer my question, Joe. I understand the limitations with the size of the site. I just, I'm assuming that if they don't put the multifamily in and and keep that as a retailer, commercial, then there's concerns about meeting the three different types of uses. Is is that something that's that? I mean, is that a hard and fast thing that the applicant has to have the three uses over the the type of use in terms of how we analyze it? I mean, I just, um, it's, I'm just trying to understand like how we can best integrate this into this corner because it's a really unique corner, how it's going to develop out. And the area in the northwest part of the corners had lots of issues. It's four acres. There's issues with getting anything built there because of the geography. So I think this whole corner is really critical for us to look at as a whole. And I just have a lot of concerns about getting this one right.
Council and pro, those are great points. I completely understand. I could wave a wand. I would include more commercials as well on all of these mixed use parcels. So I do understand that. The three uses are not necessarily multifamily, single family, different types of residential and then commercial. Within the comp plan, we largely look at residential as one use, not multiple types of uses. There could be multiple types of residential uses, but residential use is residential. Where they meet the three uses and it is not a hard and fast requirement on a site this small. It's a recommended portion or recommended comment or requirement, I should say, a recommended requirement. That doesn't make sense, but it's a recommendation within the comp plan to have those three uses. But when it's a site this small, we usually do not make that a hard and fast rule. If council wants more commercial, because we have lost commercial in other areas of this corner and further to the east, that's understandable. That's something that staff has mentioned in all of the pre-apps with the applicants. That's why we we push them to maintain a commercial component of the site. Most people would have preferred not to do commercial at all on the site. So I will leave that up to the council to make that determination.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel and straighter.
Thank you. What is maybe a question for the applicant if we don't have the answer? But I guess I'm just curious, what is the distance from the sort of northeast corner from the north northernmost building there to the single family? And do you feel like that's an appropriate buffer? It just feels like a really large building to have next to single family residential.
May I refer directly to the east along the east boundary?
Yes, I'm referring to the northeasternmost corner of the site. Yep.
Great question. Yes, that came up at the commission hearing as well, both of them. It was somewhat short. I believe it was originally like twenty-six feet now because they took out the two or they took out a whole section of units along the east boundary. It's now a minimum of forty-four feet between the fence, the property line and the east side of that building.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel and Borton.
Joe, does page thirty-nine of the staff report depict it as changed or is that the original?
More than likely, the site plan within, if you're talking about a site plan, then it should have been changed, yes.
It's just an illustration of the the three D image on page thirty-nine.
Similar to this? I hope.
No.
That's all right.
Perhaps this?
Yep.
That one. Yes, that's been updated. Correct.
Okay.
That's, yeah, this would have been closer with another building, probably where the plaza is right here. Because they did have a walkway here still. And now they took that unit out, reduced it from four stories to three stories. Granted, the very peak of the roof is still at the maximum forty-foot height limit within the R15, but then it slips away. And then pushed it further out, added some more open space and greens, greens, wow, trees. Been a heck of a February.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel and pro.
Thank you. Joe, in the staff report, it mentions that there is temporary full access on Linder. What does that mean and can that access be taken away?
Council and pro.
The full access.
Yes, yes, ma'am. That's I tried to explain that briefly. It's a full access right now because from my understanding from ACHD is they don't want to limit the access on the west side of Linder for the ambulatory service that's out there. So but yes, ACHD can remove that and make it a right and right out. Maybe that happens. I do not have any idea when or if that could, but it can happen, yes.
Counsel, initial questions for Joe? Then I'll ask the applicant to please come forward.
Mr. Mayor, against council members, Andrew Wheeler, two nine two three North Arthur Circle, Boise, Idaho, eight three seven zero three, with DG Group Architecture. And yeah, appreciate your time this morning, this evening in looking at this project. It's been a long road, about two years and multiple design concepts. And we've been working on it about two years, multiple design concepts and have worked really closely with staff. Joe has been fantastic throughout all this, as you can tell from his report, very detailed. And you know, we've been working on it for a while. So to start off, you know, in looking at the city meridian goals and vision, you know, for the future mixed use community zone. One of the main purposes that is to allocate areas where communities serving uses and dwellings are seamlessly integrated into the urban fabric. And as noted in the staff comments, the site proposes as a transitional density from the existing single family to the main arterial roads on the perimeter. And this definitely supports the goals of the city meridian and bringing more housing, which we desperately need and finding that balance, which we can talk more about of the on the commercial use. But I mean, there's certainly concern in the marketplace of providing too much commercial and you also need enough residential to support the commercial. So trying to find that that balance on all those issues. But we can jump into the presentation for Lenin Point Community. To start off, a step back to the existing conditions. Looking at an aerial map of the site in the southeast corner of Eustick and Linder, you can see when you zoom out a little bit, the connectivity of the local street network. So there are multiple exit points onto Linder and Eustick. So we're not funneling everybody through West Pebblestone to one exit on Eustick or one exit onto Linder. In looking at some of the challenges on the site, this is a survey that we initially received. Multiple challenges. So the arterial streets, difficult to get access in and out. We have a single family on the east and the south end. And then the Kellogg drain, which runs through the middle of the site, which was severely limiting any development potential. And then the floodway, which is in the bottom left corner. And then a lot of about three quarters of the rest of the site is in the flood plain. So that whole lower southwest corner is untouchable, more or less for any development. Here's an existing photo looking on Linder, looking north of the existing curb cut, which we are proposing to utilize. This is the connection from the crease and lateral to the, let me step back to here also. They that's the crease and lateral on the southwest corner. And then you also have the five-mile drain that goes roughly parallel with Linder. So there's a lot happening in that southwest corner. This is the image of that crease and lateral. So this is looking south, southeast. This is the five-mile drain culvert looking west, northwest. Again, the single family in the distance, this is looking southeast. This is North Zion, the existing road and the existing single family. You can see the eastern single family to the right. This is how the road currently dead ends into the property. Again, see the single family of mostly two-story on the east side. Here's that neighborhood that is on the through West Pebblestone and North Zion. This is the West Pebblestone road that dead ends into the property on the east end. And here's the existing single family, which would be adjacent to that plaza that was shown moments ago. And you can see the height differentiation there where the site is actually lower than the existing single family, which we'll get into a little more. And then this is looking standing on Eustick, looking west at that single family. So as Joe mentioned, mixed use community proposing three different sites of the commercial and the northwest and then mixed or the multifamily in the northeast and single family in the majority of the site. A lot of the the constraints that we were working with, one is access. So we were, we had to utilize existing curb cuts along Eustick and Linder to meet ACHD requirements. Another requirement of ACHD, as Joe mentioned, was the public road. So they wanted us to connect West Pebblestone and North Zion. So that was a requirement that we needed to meet, which we do in this. And the overall spirit of the project, you know, was how can we have front porches? How can we have eyes on the street? How can we, you know, have a community that isn't as little car centric as we can make it, have a building that faces that patios and index face off Linder, not garages? And, you know, make it an overall benefit and positive impact on the community. The red dash that kind of goes on the south border and then up to the northwest, that's the proposed easement for the Kellogg drain, which intersects with the floodway. So that's one way we were able to, you know, utilize the site a little bit better, getting some efficiencies by overlapping those two uses, which we've worked closely with NAMPA Meridian Irrigation District on to accomplish that. On the the commercial building, you can see kind of in the center of the site is our public plaza. And this graphic kind of helps illustrate a little bit better on the pathways and how those sites are interconnected. Here's that public road, just to illustrate what is public and what is private with the majority of the other road being, all of the other road being private. And so this just shows more clearly that pathway plan, the dog park in the the lower left corner. And here's an open space exhibit to illustrate where open space is on the site. So we have fairly distributed open space throughout. It's it is majority, the majority is concentrated in that southwest. But we do have, you know, the Mew that runs through the center as well as the plaza in the upper right northeast corner. And in the center, the main plaza for the commercial. As Joe mentioned, here's a parking plan that illustrates where we we show parking or where we're providing parking. In the commercial, we're required to provide twenty-four stalls. We're providing twenty-five at a five hundred square foot per stall requirement. In the multifamily portion, we're required to provide thirty-three and we're providing thirty-five. And that includes surface parking, covered surface parking and three on-street stalls, which is on a private street there. And then in our single family, we're required one hundred and seventy-three stalls. And we're providing one hundred and ninety-seven. And in yellow is the guest parking or the street surface parking, while all other units would have two car garages and two cars in the driveway. So ample parking throughout. And a rendered view, which Joe was showing earlier. So to kind of quickly go through the building design, the intent is for a bit of a more modern aesthetic on the commercial and the multifamily to then contrast with the more traditional look of the neighborhood of the single. of the single-family residential. Materials would be metals, metal siding, concremationary units, concrete wainscot, and storefront windows. This is the larger of the commercial buildings on the corner. And then this would be a more satellite commercial, which we anticipate, you know, ice cream parlor, could be a tap room, could be, you know, any use that's going to activate that plaza and kind of bring the community together a little bit more. There's a view on the right of those two commercial buildings. This is looking south on, standing above Eustick. And then here's a view of that commercial space adjacent to that plaza with that public art feature, which we see as a space that will come, become very activated. And, you know, people, businesses will want to set up a location here. The multifamily building, it was revised to be, as Joe mentioned, nine units per building, three stories per plate and three stories high, with one, a single-car garage in the middle there. This would be two, three, and one bedrooms, with the middle unit being a one-bedroom. In order to help, when we brought the height down, you know, to accommodate not only just the general massing, but the existing single-family to the east, we also pitched down the, the patios, patio roofs to kind of reduce that height as much as possible and add a little bit more articulation along Eustick. Here's an exhibit that shows those setbacks a little more clearly. So we are forty-four feet to the building wall. We do have a stair tower that's roughly eight to nine feet coming out of that. So there's a, you know, we're roughly, you know, thirty, thirty-four feet, thirty-five feet away from the property line to the stair tower, stair tower, which again, has no windows, is a small portion of that overall elevation. In looking at the, the building heights and the grade heights, the existing single-family is at a twenty-five-seventy-five grade elevation. Our site pad is at a twenty-five-seventy-two. So we're already dropped three feet below the existing single-family, which helps further reduce that scale. Here's that same image you saw moments ago, the plaza, which is, you know, provides a nice amenity space, welcoming entry into the site in a non, in the, not the main entrance, but, you know, a site, a satellite pedestrian amenity for the residents. This is a view looking west, if you're heading down West Pebblestone with the multifamily on your right. And then one of the concerns, this is if you're coming in off of Eustick and heading into the site, looking west, there was a concern that people are going to mistakenly go through this drive aisle and try to get to the commercial, because we originally had it open. So we'd since our plan, our first planning zoning meeting, we have blocked that off with landscape, as well as added signs that say resident-only, you know, no through traffic. That's that entrance. This is looking north of Eustick, coming south. This is Building B, the five-unit townhome building adjacent to, on the west end, overlooking Lender. Materials on this would be shake siding, board and battened wood panel siding, a bit more of a traditional look, asphalt shingle roofing, stepping down to single-story garages on the, the west side or the east side of the building. And there's a view of that, and that's that ten-foot path that connects, that you can see goes up towards north on Lender. And then adjacent to the tot lot on the left there is that building B. We have one, three-unit building, which previously was two stories and now is, or was three stories, now it's two stories. Similar design concepts, similar materials as Building B. And that is located to the northeast of the dog park. You can see that in the right-hand corner there. So that kind of steps back to get an overall view of the dog park, the floodway, Kellogg Drain reroute. And this is on the, standing on the north-southwest corner, looking northeast. The single-family homes, you know, we wanted to have some variety and differentiation to not have one home type throughout the whole community. Primarily, they are the same footprint. And with the one revision on the garage side and the patio side being a gable on the patio side in one version and a hip roof on the other, and then you flip it to invert that for a variety of, or variation of aesthetics. And so this is looking at that mew and kind of what that starts to look like when you put that all together with a low-four-foot fence to encourage, you know, neighbor interaction, visibility, and foster that community that we're trying to create here. And we do have the three single-family detached homes, which are two-story, similar traditional style in the southeast corner. This was the previous park of the, the dog park, which was a positive change and, and feedback from planning and zoning, moving it to a larger area. So now this can be just an open space for children to play or any, any residential use. Similar to Building A, in the, all the units along the east boundary, we have the same three-foot drop in grade differential between what's currently existing and our proposed pads. Here you can see our setbacks to the wall, we're eighteen-foot-eight and three-foot lower. And we're about nineteen-foot-six high to the roof. And our second-story patios are twenty-two foot back. So there's quite a, we're well above and beyond the required setbacks. Here's a view of that, looking west of those eastern homes. And I will also note that one thing that came up in our planning and zoning hearing was the scale of these buildings. And you can notice that while we are providing two lots, the overall building mass is roughly equivalent to what's existing on the larger single-family homes. So from a massing scale perspective, we're aligned to what's already being, what's already existing. This is a view looking north, that'd be North Zion, coming in the public street on your right. And a view looking east off of Lender. And a view looking south on Eustick. It's been a long design process on this project, and we've gone through a lot of different iterations and versions and trying to find what's going to really work with all these constraints. We feel that we've come to a, a solution that meets the city's needs for housing, provides a connected mixed-use community, and is going to be beneficial overall for the, the community in the city of Meridian. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you. Council, questions for the applicant?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Building A, if we could go back to the graphic that shows it next to the neighbors, this is probably the area that I have the most heartburn. I read the minutes from planning and zoning. I appreciate the changes that you made. Even at three stories, it just feels like this, you know, as you quoted from our comprehensive plan, we're supposed to be seamlessly integrated into the urban fabric. I'm not sure for me, this is a definition of an appropriate transition. You have a single-family home forty-four feet away from a three-story building. Did you guys consider some kind of modulation? For example, perhaps making the part of the building that faces the neighbors a two-story building? And then even increasing the height the further you get away from the neighbors? Is that something that you guys took a look at? Just help me understand, you know, kind of the different, the process you went through with kind of modifying this specific building.
Originally, the building was a four-story building and up to that property line, in which we actually, that neighbor came to our neighborhood meeting. He was not, I mean, he, he wanted us to keep a willow tree there and wanted to make sure we were going to have enough landscaping to screen it and, you know. So he wasn't very upset by it at four stories against his property. Then, once we got the feedback from commission about dropping it, we kept it at four stories for the majority of the building and dropped. They were two-story units before, so we, and so four-high, so we'd lost the top two or top one. And so it'd be two-story only. At our first commission hearing, that was deemed not enough to, you know, for the overall mass and scale. So we reduced it. We just omitted it completely, added the pedestrian amenity, and went to the whole building being three stories. So we've gone, yeah, we've done, we've done that exact process, and, and this is where we've aligned. I would say that, you know, with a corner and a, with a site on a hard corner, if you will, I mean, I think that there's a, there's a level of density and a level of, I mean, density that I think is appropriate for a, a site in this location. And how do you seamlessly tie into that? I mean, I guess that's always the challenge. But we can certainly look at that as far as stepping that there if needed. In my opinion, I think that a three-story building forty-four feet away does provide, and not to mention three-foot lower than the existing subgrade or the existing surface of the single-family pad. So it is quite a substantial setback.
Mr. Mayor, if I could follow up, I've just got a couple quick ones to knock.
Councilwoman Schrader.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that explanation, you know, still at forty feet. I totally get it that there's a, there's a different grade, but this is still pretty high next to single-family residential. That's my struggle. So I just, the first thing. And then the second thing is, in line with Councilwoman Perrow, we're losing more and more commercial in the city relative to residential. And that, that is an overall concern of mine. For the smaller amount of commercial that you do have, there's some ideas being thrown out there. What stage are you at in terms of that coming to fruition? One thing I always worry about is approving a mixed-use development. Of course, the residential will come, but when will the commercial come? So I was hoping you had an update on your timeline there.
As far as what use is specifically going to happen there? We don't have a specific user yet, but the intent is that we'd provide a drive-through access on that larger parcel, the nine-thousand-square-foot commercial building. So whether that be, most likely, a bank is what we anticipate could be a use there, which would be a complementary use next to the traditional, or to the neighborhood. But we are very open. We know that there's going to be a CUP process to get that approved anyways. And right now, we don't have a in-user in mind, but.
Okay, I just have one more.
If I could, just to touch on your point before about the, the lack of commercial, there's also that balance of providing enough housing to support that commercial. And I think that there's a lot of hesitancy in the marketplace to build too much commercial. So I think from a market factor, market driving factor, who's going to shop at those commercial locations? And providing parking for those, when you can provide a denser housing type that's going to provide more users per square foot of land.
Thank you. Yeah, just to comment on that, and everyone's got a different philosophy. But from my seat, looking at the future of the city, that's a timing question. And we have our whole future to get it right. So I don't feel, I don't feel that we need to be in a rush in terms of, you know, I want us to move appropriately, to have the, the right development that we need. I guess what, just one more, maybe if you could, I do actually want to say, compliment you. I appreciate the pedestrian-oriented development. I can tell that you guys put a lot of thought into that. You don't have to comment on this, but if you wouldn't mind commenting a little more on price point? Or does this serve a specific need in terms of more kind of affordable, more affordable or middle-of-the-road housing here? How does this kind of position within the market?
I don't have any specifics on that, but I would say, I mean, we don't currently have any affordable funding or, you know, it's not, we're not proposing an affordable housing project. But certainly want to provide housing that's going to, we need to provide housing that for two people who can afford it. At the end of the day, I mean, somebody's got to live in these homes. And we're, we're reaching a point now where, you know, at what point does the market say no? So I don't have a specific answer for that.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilwoman Perrow.
I have three or four questions as well, if I might ask those in succession.
Go for it.
Okay, thank you. Somewhat similar along the lines of Councilwoman Schrader. As far as the commercial goes, we, I know that the commercial real estate industry tracks rooftops. And we have a lot of approvals coming into the area. And it creates traffic challenges to spread the commercial out so far from each other. And so therefore, these mixed-use neighborhoods, mixed-use neighborhood areas are just really critical. And I don't have a problem approving a plan that leaves blank space, sitting, waiting for commercial to come after rooftops are finally built. I don't have an issue with that. I'd rather have that space dedicated. I realize the developers don't, you know, they don't want that land sitting there and not being utilized. But this is just an opportunity for us to make sure that we have the appropriate ratios. And we're not currently in Meridian, in, in my opinion, we're not, we're not right on those ratios yet. So, so questions about the, the commercial buildings themselves? The, the mixed-use community says that there's not supposed to be a strip mall type of feel. So is this going to be like one building that has three or four tenants in it? Is it going to be an individual building, individual buildings that are one user? Is it, kind of give us an idea of what you envision that looking like? Like, is there going to be five businesses in there or two businesses in there? And, you know, how, how much of that is expected to kind of come from people walking and riding their bikes? Or is there intended to be a lot of, of traffic coming in from, you know, within two or three square miles? That's the first question.
Okay, yeah, I thought you were going to keep going on the other ones. Yeah, so appreciate the question. The current square footage on those buildings is nine-thousand-square-foot in the northwest corner, the larger one, and three-thousand-square-foot in the lower. More than likely, the lower would be its own user adjacent to that plaza, which I think would provide a lot of activation, you know, with that being a central gathering point. And again, that could be an ice cream parlor, a burger, burger place. It could be a multiple different uses, but something a little bit more aligned in that nature. Possibly it could go to two fifteen-hundred-square-foot uses, but more than likely, I would anticipate a one-three-thousand-square-foot user. For the nine-thousand-square-foot building, we do provide a double-loaded drive-through on that. We envision that being either a, you know, two, forty-five-hundred-square-foot users or possibly three-three-thousand-square-foot users. So there could be a potential of four to maybe five businesses on that commercial corner. There is a chance that a, a larger user would want to use the single nine-thousand-square-feet. It's a little hard to tell right now, though, on, on what's, what's going to actually happen there. But as I mentioned with the CUP and revising it, you know, to the needs of an in-user of what that might, you know, how we need to adapt that based on, on those needs, based on the approvals and what's, you know, the constraints that we would have at that point. So that is anticipated, that there'd be some adjustments that may, may need to be made.
Okay, and so, and I understand that. And then there was a member of the public that was concerned at the commission meeting about, you know, whether it would be one owner. You know, who's, is this going to be sold off? It's not uncommon for, for these developments to have those commercial pieces that are sold off to separate owners. That being said, how will the associations integrate? The homeowners association, are you going to have a separate business association for those two buildings from an HOA that's being managed? So in terms of ownership, are, are the, is the multifamily going to be condominiumized? Is that going to be like its own individual investors? And then the, the five units on the west will have its own ownership? And then the homes are going to be sold or rented? Or help us kind of understand, like, how many different owners do we have? And how are they integrating with one another when it comes to landscaping management and private road management? And that kind of thing, because it seems like it could get really split up.
Yeah, certainly. The, from private road and landscape management, I mean, that would be in a, a private road agreement between the, the properties and cross-access agreements, as well as the, the landscape portion of that. They are parceled out as separate sites right now. So we, we do not know if the same user or buyer, builder will come in and build everything. One, one of the buildings, you know, the townhomes and the multifamily, or also the commercial. So right now, it is, I don't have a direct answer on who's going to own those or how. But certainly, there's mechanisms that we can put in place to, to maintain the integrity and the, the integration of all three of the sites.
So at this point, you don't have even like, you don't have a buyer for, or a builder or anything set up to know whether this is going to be four, five, six different owners on the site? And whether the. and whether the inti- it will integrate well with managing the site as a whole. It's just that, like the, you know, usually there's some more space between commercial and residential where they're not right up next to each other and where, or where you have some more integration with, with the same ownership. Or, you know, I'm just, I'm very concerned that it's all going to be managed and eventually start to look like, not like a, a, you know, integrated project anymore, that it will just be managed in a way that will seem really divided, I guess.
Maybe you could help me understand a specific concern of how that division might take place. You know, it, from my understanding, you know, if somebody is using, operating the commercial space and, and to answer your question on the townhomes, more than likely, those would be for sale, not for rent. So if you have homeowners there that, you know, want to utilize the commercial plaza, for instance, and, you know, be patrons of that business, I don't think that the business would have any problems with that. And so help me understand kind of your specific concerns on, on what you see as, as issues there.
Right. So if I'm a homeowner in that and the commercial or the multifamily investors are not ma- are not maintaining those, it's going to affect my property value. So the more owners and investors that you have that are maintaining things at different quality levels, the more challenging you, issues you create in the market for value for all the parties.
Specifically to just landscape and, and trash pickup, that type of?
Building maintenance, structure, trash pickup, anything that would consider it a, you know, utilizing, you have a significant amount of grass in that green space, right? It could be kept very well and look really beautiful, or it could look really terrible. It's, um, you know, homeowner, homeowners associations that are just individual neighbors. If you have some of, you know, the, the, if you have the HOA that are, that have the owners and then over here on the, on the west side, you've got five townhomes that aren't owners. They're, they may have different priorities as to how all this green space is going to be maintained. Because some is in, some are invested in different, in a different way. So like that park could be managed very differently. If it's being managed by a group of homeowners, then it's being managed by an investment group that owns an apartment complex. But yet they're all supposed to be utilizing them and it's supposed to add value to each property.
Yeah, and we do plan on having an HOA agreement, you know, on the property and how that ties in between each, for the single-family, the multifamily and the commercial is yet to be fully determined. But we're more than happy to, you know, coordinate however we need to, to, to ensure that that does. Best appearance as possible or as, as designed.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I, I do have a lot of cons- I mean, as far as like what the conditions are that the city puts on it, I, I don't, I don't know, and that'd be a question for staff or for legal about how we can condition that, or if we can condition that from a management standpoint. But that has me pretty, pretty concerned about, um, just how that will function as a whole. So, um, and then the third question I have is, regarding the, the amenities for the multifamily. So I realize you guys have, have geographic limitations on this with the laterals and that you've done a really fantastic job, I think, with the open space and the green space. And there's just a lot of things about how you designed it that I really like. But there's a couple of things that have me concerned. And that is that I, the, the multifamily to the north, it feels like it's really kind of lacking amenities, actually. So maybe I'm just not getting a good vision. I mean, prior to having, adding the extra space up here in the northeast corner, there, there was only just the one plaza space with a piece of public art down here in the commercial area. And there was pretty much no amenities for that multifamily up on the north side. So it, can you help me understand, like, how, what, I mean, I, I don't know, I, I just feel like kind of a piece of public art is not really a good, a good amenity for, to you, I mean, what, what does it do? You know, I mean, like, this is multifamily. I feel like there should be something more functional. So maybe I'm just missing the vision for it.
Yeah, I, thank you for that question. I, I think that one of the main reasons is we viewed this as, you know, mixed-use community where we weren't trying to, intending to put site amenities at each site for that amenity. You know, the nature of, and spirit of mixed-use being that those multifamily users have adequate walking paths to that plaza and also through the mew to the dog park, to the open space and can integrate into that community. So, so that was kind of, one part of that is, is that answered. The other is just being strictly limited by, you know, the site constraints of, of what we're, what we're required to do here with the three different uses, uh, with the access points, the public road coming in and the southwest corner of losing a lot of that land. So between those two, you're not wrong. The, there are very few amenity spaces other than the, the new plaza in the northeast. And but that, but you are directly adjacent, you know, to the, the current plaza with the public art. But there are not, we don't have a fitness facility or, you know, anything of that nature in that multifamily. So yes, there, there are a few amenities on site B, but they're very close and integrated with all the other amenities, which we are providing above and beyond what we were required.
Yeah, yes, you are. No, I'm, I'm not, I'm just, I'm wanting to kind of see, I guess, a, a better balance in the project as a whole. And I understand the constraints that come with it. I just think it would be nice to have some green space and picnic space and, and something that's, that's outdoor space utilized on that north side that's, that creates a little more balance for that. Because obviously, the, the townhome users will have their own backyards, right? And, and then they'll have this big park, but on the north side, there's, there's not anywhere that's, that's really dedicated. It doesn't, it feels like it's kind of an afterthought. So, um, just one more quick question for you then. Can you help me understand how the residential is going to be buffered from the commercial? There's just the little drive, drive aisle, but like, is there going to be, you know, all the, all the renderings that we see always have these big gorgeous trees. And then when they're planted, they're like four foot tall and have no leaves. So it takes ten years to make it look like what the pictures show. So what kind of, you know, normally when we have commercial to residential buffering, there's a twenty-five foot buffer. So what, I mean, just help me understand, are you going to have like a wall in between the commercial? Is it, what's that going to look like to kind of differentiate? Hey, this is a residential area that's private now, and this isn't somewhere that we want people kind of going in, driving around from the commercial.
Yeah, yeah, great question. The smaller three thousand square foot commercial, the back of that on the, the south side, that whole strip is heavily landscaped. And I understand the concern of, of trees not reaching maturity after some years. You know, we could certainly up that, you know, from a vertical height perspective of the type of landscape that goes in there. We weren't intending there to be a wall, uh, again, back to the, the spirit of mixed-use community. You know, walls that aren't private backyards probably don't fit into that category in, in our understanding. We'd certainly would look at, at putting up a wall if that was something that, that council deemed appropriate. Uh, but I think a, a good solution to that would be to condition the project of having a, a certain height of landscaping or some type of specified landscaping or density of landscaping on that, uh, south side. I, I feel like that's kind of the main area that you're talking about, right? That needs that buffering. So yeah, I, I would answer it that way, that we would want to, the intent is to add landscaping there to buffer it, but we can certainly increase that as best we're able.
Thank you. That might be a question for, um, staff. I know, I mean, you know, they're just going to say what, what is required by code. I don't know how we as council would kind of, say what the appropriate amount would be, but I just, we, we do have other areas of the city where there's commercial that has, that backs up to residential and we've taken great care to make sure that there is some sort of sound buffering. And, you know, we don't know what hours that this is going to function at. I mean, you know, an ice cream parlor might be open until nine PM. So we want to take those things into account.
Understood.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Joe.
Thank you. Great question, Councilman Perro. And to be honest, staff kind of saw it a little bit more aligned with the applicant of, of kind of wanting the integration. I mean, even amenable, currently it doesn't meet code because the setback's supposed to be twenty-five feet landscaped, not necessarily a dry aisle. So staff was, is amenable to having that reduced per what is shown because the physical separation will be greater than the twenty-five feet. It looks like it's going to be at least thirty feet in most cases, if not more, with some landscaping. If council feels differently, that is definitely your purview. You can include an additional condition of approval. It just says denser landscaping and/or meet that minimum twenty-five feet with just landscaping. It's probably going to require some other modifications for the site, but it is what it is. It can be accommodated, yes. But staff did see it a little bit more as a opportunity for the integration. You know, from a personal standpoint, I lived in an apartment with no green space between the back of a commercial building and it was, um, really just random people in my apartment complex that was way more annoying than the commercial. So it, it just, it can go either way.
Um, so it, was there any consideration made of moving that three thousand square foot building up to the north and then just having all parking in that section? And adding more?
Yeah, I mean, we did look at several different design options. We went through so many, I'm having a hard time blanking if we, that specific one. I think we also wanted to, there's the requirement of fifty percent of the site or the building frontage, you know, being along, along the site. What we were attempting to do was to, you know, put the building on the hard corner for visibility and screen some of the parking from, from view for that main intersection. But also let users see that there is parking there. So they know, you know, what they're going into or, you know, I think that most users like to know that they can see the, where they're going to park before they pull into a, a development or entry into some place. So it was a balance of those two that we were trying to find. And, um, another driver to that was our drive-through. You know, since COVID, you know, it's, it's a big demand to have a drive-through and it opens up various, you know, different users and a wider branch of potential users. So that was also a driver for why that's open, because that becomes that circulation path for that. And then thirdly, having the commercial adjacent to the public plaza, but the public plaza a little more central or as central as we can make it to help aid in the, in the use of that commercial space. So we could certainly look at that, but those were the reasoning, reasons behind how we got here.
Counsel, any additional questions for the applicant?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're going to go and take a fifteen-minute recess, and so we'll reconvene at seven fifty.
We'll move into public testimony. Do we have anyone sign up in advance?
Mr. Mayor, we did. We had two people sign up in advance. Carissa Cinden.
When your name is called, if you'd come forward and say your name and address for the record and be recognized for three minutes.
I'm Carissa Cinden. 914 North 8th Street in Boise. I have an interest in this property because I grew up on it. I'm 43. I lived there from the time I was a baby until I was 20 years old. So I spent half my life on that property. And as you can tell, I'm a native. And I support this property because I think it's, or this development, because I think it's a good development. I like the dog park. We need housing and the public art element is also good, I think. And as a native, you can imagine I've seen it change a lot here. And that especially right now, there's a housing crisis and we need housing so it can become more affordable for everybody. But I just want to tell you a little bit about the history of the property and it looked very different when I was a child. And I just want to tell you our perspective and that I know a lot of the neighbors are concerned about the traffic, losing their views, their quality of life. I've sat in on both public hearings at the PNC level. So I know what their concerns are. And I just wanted to share that those have been our concerns for over 20 years. My parents left the property 15 years ago. They've moved. They would still live there today if they could. But they can't because it's not the same property that it was. When I was a child in the eighties, that was a two-way stop. Two stop signs. Now there are lights there. I think it's four lanes, at least on one. I think it's all the way around. We used to have a barn on the east side of it. You know, on the west side, we had a huge barn. I had 4H goats. I was in 4H. It was really a rural lifestyle for us. And the barn is no longer there. So it's really not the same property anymore. And I was out there last week and the property or the south, I remember looking at the south and the east, even like three years ago, those houses weren't there. So what was there before these houses were there? They were our views. They were open farmland. And I think it's unreasonable to think that this property would not be developed because that's what's happening out there. And the property is unrecognizable. Like I would get teary eyed looking at even the pictures up there. But I was out there and it's just like, that's not our home anymore. So I think that it does need to be developed and yeah, so I just want to support the development and just give you the perspective of somebody who grew up there. And that it's Meridian's a different place now. And yeah, you're going to lose your views. We lost our views. My dad used to be able to see Squab Butte to the north. Can't see it anymore. And so yeah, it was a farm. It's no longer a farm and that's the end. But thank you for listening to this. Hopefully this will help you with other people. They've gone through the same thing that my family has gone through.
Thank you, Carissa. Council, any questions?
Mr. Mayor, next is Jim Peterson.
Mr. Peterson here. Okay.
There were two other people signed in, but they didn't say they wanted to testify.
If there's anybody here that would like to provide testimony, please come forward at this time to do so. And if there's anybody, do we have anybody online?
I know we were down. We do not.
Do you not have a bay online? So just anybody here? Say your name and address for the record.
Good evening, council members. My name is Matt Shanterberger. I live at 3072 Northwest 13th Street in Crescent Creek. Appreciate you all having this meeting tonight and allowing me to speak. So we've lived in Crescent Creek for about three and a half years. Our house was the first house on 13th Street that was fully constructed and movable. It's my wife, I and our five-year-old son. I've lived in Meridian for 10 years now. The first six and a half years I lived in Redfeather, which is just north of Kleiner Park. When I first moved into that house, Kleiner and the village weren't built yet. About two years in, that's when all that went up and we saw the traffic through our neighborhood go up quite a bit. I realized that Kleiner and the village are quite bigger than this proposal, but what I really worry about is the commercial aspect with it being integrated into the residential. I could see it being fully developed as commercial and being blocked off from the rest of the neighborhood and only having access from the two points on Eustick and Linder. But with that road that goes east to west, just south of Eustick, I understand they've put in some scenery that would stop traffic theoretically from entering that. But I've seen human nature. I've seen that when people see the shortest path to get there and they're turning left from Eustick on to 13th Street to get into there, they're very likely going to go right through. So while it is unfortunate that residents often complain about commercial being a residential, I think there's a way to do that properly without integrating it into the residential. Ultimately, I would have loved to see it be single detached family homes. I'm fine with it being townhomes. I just really worry about the commercial aspect of it. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Is there anybody else like to provide testimony on this item? Like to come forward? Your name and address for the record, be recognized for three minutes.
Hello, my name is Karen Bittler. I reside at 3055 Northwest 13th Street in the Crescent Creek subdivision on the eastern side of the proposed Lennon Point community. My concerns and suggestions are as follows. Instead of townhomes for the eastern side of the development, we suggest single-family detached or patio homes, which Commissioners Cassinelli and Yusli suggested on the December 2nd meeting. Therefore, this would alleviate density and I'd like you to commit to 10 to 12-foot mature trees thereby these foliage won't uproot existing fences. It would reduce noise and also protect our privacy. Mixed use will increase traffic, noise, congestion, pollution, and crime. We suggest that you limit the residential portion to detached families, single homes and patio homes for the entire development, thereby increasing our home values. Initially, the builder purchased the entire eight acres and it's been revealed that the developer decided to sell the commercial portion, thereby bringing to our attention their lack of confidence to fulfill the commercial portion of their initial contract with the city of Meridian and thus showing us their ineptness to find suitable commercial businesses and abandoning their commitment, which leads to the question, will it stay vacant? Will it be a mixed use? Will it be changed to residential? Will it be single-family detached homes? And that would add value to the area. Mixed use community is on the northeast corner of Linder and Eustick. It's being built as well as several townhomes being built presently on Eustick, which is less than a mile away. The proposed Lennon Point community is being built in a flood zone as evidenced by the FEMA map provided by Jason Korn from the city's Public Works Department. All homes built on farmland already have a high water table, even though Geotech gave their authorization to build. Crescent Creek had Geotech authorization to build and we're not in a flood plain. It's evidenced in that map and still we had flooding in our crawl spaces. And this, our builder had a remedy at this and it cost them several thousands of dollars. And these neighbors are to the north of us and had worse flooding. Just because Geotech gives Lennon Point the go-ahead should not make it truly a go-ahead. Coupled with the proposed development being in a flood zone and an extreme flood zone can make the odds potentially worse for the builder ultimately. Also, the proposal to pipe the, the proposal to pipe the Kellogg drain doesn't seem to be effective since water has to go somewhere. Leaving it undisturbed can be the best course of action. It's my understanding that there is a current Meridian Historical Council in place. Unfortunately, there are no regulations or codes how to treat the historical locations as 1515 Eustick, the barn and the Crescent Creek lateral. And there's things in the Idaho Historical Sites Inventory, which was prepared by the Meridian Historical Tag. And they do stuff in Boise, but they don't do anything here. We have this all set up, but nothing's done. So all I'm asking in summary is for your consideration to rethink building the Lennon Point on existing farmland in various flood zones while manipulating existing drains as well as consideration for the historical preservation of the Crescent Creek Northwest lateral. If you feel the need to proceed, please consider the existing homes to the east and build single-family detached or patio homes with large mature trees that won't uproot our existing fences. We ask you to take the best course of action in order to have the least impact in our community, the generation, and those that follow. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions? Is there anybody else in the community that would like to provide testimony on this, on this item? Then also the applicant to come forward to close out the public hearing.
So I'll start with, well, get to the concerns and the testimony in a moment. To touch on the HOA and that conversation, you know, in talking with our client who is the builder on the project, the intent there would be to build those townhomes and then sell them individually as well as build and hold the multifamily all under one HOA and having the commercial under that HOA. And then a sub HOA for the commercial and the multifamily, since they would be multifamily and the townhome HOA would be two different herbage to accommodate those. So that would preserve the integrity of the landscape and the cleanliness of the site. So I wanted to touch on that. Also, to address the pavers on the south side and the screening or providing pavers on that south road would be one mitigation measure that we intend to do. We do need to provide some onsite storm drain mitigation anyway. So that would help to, you know, beautify that space a little bit better as well as providing denser landscape. And the, and then on building A, with the intensity of that facing the existing single family, that is a whole side of the home. Joe, do I have the presentation up? And I'll pull up that photo really quick here, but there, I don't even know if there are any windows on that side and it's a side yard of a house. So it's not as if that's their front living room that's facing. Yeah. So you can see here, I don't believe there are any windows that are even above that fence on that home there. So it is a side yard and so it's very little intrusion. Now, to touch on the testimonial issues, then looking at commercial and blocking off West Yellowstone or West Pebblestone, that was actually our original plan. You know, when I was laying this out, you know, why would we want to encourage traffic to flow from our site into the adjacent single family? ACHD came back and made it a requirement that we connect North Zion and West Pebblestone. So that's the driving factor there. We also had the same concern about too much commercial and wanting to not go from a single family to a commercial use, but a single family to a multi to a commercial and having that be a more smooth transition throughout. As far as the single-family detached homes along the east, as I mentioned previously, we're roughly the same scale, even though we're two lots, we're two smaller lots in an R15 zoning of, you know, a little over 2,000 square foot lots. So from a massing perspective, we're not a massive intrusion. That's very different in like kind to what's existing, existing on the eastern homes. We do show trees on the landscape plan and we can certainly add more if, if that, they're a little difficult to see here, but you can certainly see on the east there several trees we positioned at those patio decks for level two to provide as best screening as we could. Again, back to the HOA comment, that could be incorporated there to ensure that those are maintained and in proper order. The flood zone, we're confident that we're not, we don't have concerns over building this project with, in the flood plain. It will be lifted the one foot above the base flood elevation and, you know, certainly we're doing our homework to make sure that we don't build something that is going to be an issue in the, in the future. So we're confident that that's not going to be an issue. The Kellogg drain and the piping, that was sized and we spent a significant amount of time to make sure to get that right of sizing it appropriately to accommodate what was already there as well as oversizing it to make sure we can handle any of the water shed that comes through there. And it's going to be cleaner. I mean, right now it's open air. Anything can go in there and, but by piping it underground, that's going to provide a cleaner way for that water to pass downstream to the five-mile creek. And we're wrapping it to its current discharge point. So we're not interrupting how it discharges into the five-mile drain. And as far as the Crescent Creek is concerned and, you know, keeping that clean, it's difficult to see on this, this image, but we do show a fence. The, so North Napa Meridian Irrigation District wants us to fence that off. We're doing that by just extending the dog fence across. So it'll, it'll seem more integrated. And that solves both of those issues that we worked out with them. So that's how we're addressing that issue and their liability concerns. So as you can see, there's been, there's a lot of moving parts on this project. There are no simple, clean-cut answers. We've done our best attempt to design something that, that we can stand behind, that we think the community would enjoy, that the city of Meridian would, would benefit from. And, you know, we would like to see more communities like this get built, even though I think one of the reasons they don't is because it's difficult to do a higher level of design to go through two years of design and deal with several constraints. Again, this site sat there for a long time. I know other people that had it under contract and then they let it go and it was because they just didn't want to tackle the issues. And ultimately that we showed up and we asked the landowner, hey, we'll take a look at this and take a run at it. And so that's how we got to this point here today. So it was kind of taking a risk to solve a problem that wasn't being solved and that will bring more housing and a good community for the city of Meridian. So stand for any questions.
Thank you, Andrew. Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holden.
Mr. Wheeler, just a question. As you develop this and work through designs and whatnot, was there any thought of where the multifamily is of putting townhomes in there and then moving multifamily to where townhome is currently located?
Yeah, we, we actually went through several different, first it started as three-story walk-up plans, which we got rejected real quick. Ultimately, it was, as I think Joe mentioned, you know, putting the highest density uses along the arterial streets and that, that kind of just became the driver at that point. You know, to try to get it away as far as possible from the, the townhomes or the existing townhomes on the east and, and then as having to route that public road in and trying to, how do we delineate the, you know, the different uses and the different sites? It's sort of, the Tetris of it started, kind of wanted to, to go in this direction. But we definitely looked at a lot of different uses of where to put the multifamily. And then that's it to kind of, you know, the building B, while it's a single-family townhome, that's the one on the west towards Linder. It has a multifamily feeling, you know, a scale. And so even though it is a townhome, it kind of, and again, it's on that arterial street and that more higher density use.
Mr. Mayor, follow up.
Councilman Holden.
If multifamily, if this goes through and multifamily remains there, would you be willing to do some enhanced landscaping, maybe little taller trees to buffer from that multifamily to the house to the east?
Certainly, yeah. You know, I think that the plaza became, we kind of settled on providing an additional amenity there when we lost those units. We could, we're very flexible on what to look at there. I mean, if we want to reduce that plaza a little bit, or maybe it comes a smaller seating area and it is more of a landscaped area rather than a hardscape plaza. And right now it's, you know, third landscape, two-thirds plaza, maybe that flip-flop. So I mean, yeah, we're certainly open to figuring something out there.
Mr. Mayor.
That's what I was just thinking, just taller trees, you know, that kind of give more screening.
And to that effect, for the rest of the single-family homes there on the east border, I noticed you talked about the elevation and how those are a little bit lower than, than the homes that are already existing. And then I noticed in your, your drawings, the fence was on your side, which had a six-foot fence, but from their property, that's only going to be four-foot fence, three-foot fence. And I, I didn't, I thought you mentioned something. Do they have fencing in their yards currently right now?
They do, yeah. And more likely we would build, build our own fence. That detail has yet to be determined. There you can see here the vinyl fence on that side. And you can see on the left there, that's also a vinyl fence. And so that's on the high side of that three-foot. So from a line of sight, right? I mean, that's even going to help them more by having that up there. It's a, yeah, I see your point though, concern. But us not being in control of the maintenance fence or, you know, so we could build our own or, you know, have theirs either way.
Mr. Mayor.
That's what I was just thinking.
Was that thought? Yeah, I, I thought, I didn't know if you were going to build a new fence and just put it on yours and tear theirs down. But if they have their fence and it's at six foot, then that takes care of that issue. So.
Since we have an odd number of council members and I'm not going to factor in tonight's equation one way or the other, I do want, at least want to make a comment. You know, I was on the part of the group that went through the comp plan and, and looked at these issues. Looking at the, the development for us, I gotta ask the question, do we, is our comp plan right for this corner? You know, the access issues, limitations that are there. Some of our conversation came up, another application where we were routing commercial by residential. Maybe that's a personal pet peeve, you know, in some regards where that can become the only de facto way. But is this commercial, is this corner zoned appropriately with the access issues that are there, the connections to adjacent residential? And regardless of whatnot, there's a policy at ACHD that says that that should remain a full access on Linder. I think we know good and well that it's not going to function that way, even if it is allowed to be left that way. It's kind of, the safety aspects, I think will someday over make it not that way, even if it's allowed to remain open. So I don't want to ask you to speak against your client's self-interest. But if you had your design, your desire, would you be doing a mixed-use commercial on this eight acres with all the challenges that you have? Or would you prefer to do something residential only in this area?
I don't know if residential only would be the right choice. I mean, a hard corner on arterial streets like that and pushing residential up to it. I think it is appropriate to have a higher density that filters down to a lower density. Now, however, far that distance happens or, or short. I know I personally wouldn't want to live in a, in a, up on that corner, you know, in, as a townhome or any use like that. You know, we initially had higher density in general from apartments and that type of concept, which again, the city shot down pretty quick. Not wanting more apartments, kind of apartment fatigue was the exact words that were used. So I do think it's appropriate to have a higher density use on that corner and the adjacent corner. And then you, I mean, it's a tough question because you got to transition to, you know, so how, how do you have the density, but then not have a single-family home on the corner to go to one extreme and then you know, I don't have a direct answer. I think if it was a different day, different world, different site, I mean, maybe I could, you know, spend more time to think about it. But, and I've spent two years thinking on this site. So I have a hard time maybe detaching my mind from, from that.
And I understand that you're asked to design to a certain level because our code says you have to do certain things. And I guess the question I'm trying to get around to is just because our code says it, does that mean that we're making the right assumptions for this property? And I, again, in my mind, I'm sitting here like going through my, my head about other hard corners that are two major arterials where we have commercial or where we only have residential, you know, Franklin and Linder. Again, you've got an issue with a, a drain or whatever you want to call it. There you go to Cloverdale and Overland. Again, you've got a canal issue, which is cutting off those corners, which is making the access and it's pushing it back. So just asking the question, just because our comp plan says it's right, does that mean this development is right or the comp plan is wrong? And it should look differently. And I think that's, that's just something I'm throwing out there because from my, from where I sit, I say access to this area with the commercial with the roads, I got, I personally question it with what we're being, how we're being asked to access this location with commercial on one that is, because it's across from another facility, it shouldn't have that access fully. And then we would be essentially putting a ride-in, ride-outs only in this facility. Is that appropriate for any commercial? I don't know.
Yeah. And I would say that, you know, a higher density residential use would be my first preference if, if the commercial were to go you know, versus a townhome, an extension of the townhomes or something to that, that nature.
Counsel, any further questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, I'm Pearl.
We recently have had conversations with applicants who have come and said that, you know, properties have been sitting for a while. And I'm assuming this location, it's mostly been a flood plain issue more than a desirability issue for commercial space. But we have had a few areas in the, in this, on Eustick between 10 Mile and Linder where there has been commercial in the comp plan for many, many years and nothing has gotten built there. And out of, I assume, a lack of demand. So have you, I don't know what your team has done as far as generating interest in the commercial, but is there a concern that you won't be able to fill that commercial space because of traffic flow or desirability? Or I just, I, I'm so blown away as fast as we're growing that that would be a question that we have to ask. But if, you know, patterns have really changed how people shop and where and when and, and whatnot with COVID. So maybe, you know, maybe we are looking at how, need to look at how things are done differently.
Yeah. Thanks for the question. I think that it kind of goes back to when we were having the discussion on multifamily versus commercial on that corner and how much commercial, too much commercial, enough multifamily to support the commercial. You know, that was a concern of, will we build too much commercial if we do a commercial on that whole strip? Where the multifamily site is now and, you know, mitigating that concern by the, the lower square footage of the two different 12,000 square foot total, but in two different buildings, which are really two different uses. I mean, you have the small, you know, mom and pop shop commercial, I'll call it, against the hardscape, you know, plaza, which is a much different commercial user than the, the larger ones. So we have a bit of diversity in the marketplace and that larger one with the drive-through, with the ability to, you know, break it up into two or three different commercial properties. You know, I think through those measures, we've mitigated our concern on being able to fill that commercial space.
Counsel, any additional questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Counsel, important.
We're going to do some discussion before closing the public hearing. I'll give you my thoughts on, on the application. So I start with the comp plan. I respect the process. We went through to, to gather the input, to create it and then the discipline and adherence to it. Understanding it's not anything more than a, than a very useful guide. It's not a mandatory directive, but if the mixed-use community application remains sound at this, even though it has made it maybe more challenging to try to find something that can be successful in this location. So with the mixed-use community in prep for the hearing and hearing what we did in tonight's presentation and public input, that blend of the CC and the R15 zoning remains appropriate in my mind. I think the, the way that the applicant has tried to address both and incorporate both into this fits what mixed-use community tries to encourage. I share some of the concerns of council members that the commercial might take some time. I would probably respond to that, at least from my perspective, that I'm patient. I think in time, the commercial will be there. I think it will be last and and I would discourage a rezone application from anybody who tries for that corner. Because as we try to look at what is the best long-term solution, there are short-term bumps along the road where a portion of a project might not develop as fast as others. But I do I believe that that commercial component is important and will be successful long time, long-term. So for those reasons, I thought that the application is presented was appropriate. I appreciate the adjustments made. And it, it is a very challenging parcel to make work for anybody as history has, has shown. I, I thought the open space and the pedestrian connectivity was also something that will make this very successful and a very popular project. So again, I guess the only concern I had was maybe not a concern, but an acknowledgement is that the commercial will take some time. I trust that integration between the property to the east in this has been addressed. I appreciate Councilman Hoagland's comments with regards to landscaping. Those details matter and the applicant's commitment to that helps ease that concern somewhat. So for those reasons, I'm supportive of the applications as presented. Didn't see any outstanding issues that remained unaddressed. Just appreciate the creative solution on a difficult person.
Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Yes, Joe.
I did just want to comment real quick as it kind of come up along the east boundary and landscaping. Those are going to be single family lots. And if council goes the route of what some of the residents have asked about, including landscaping along that boundary. It's, if it's not in a common lot, it's incredibly difficult for staff to maintain that and to, to enforce it. We've really just tried not to do that because we had this in Poema. I believe the same thing of how do you enforce trees on private property? As soon as the owner comes in, they can cut it down and we have no idea and that's what it is. So I just wanted to reiterate that issue if that is something that council had previously been thinking about.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
Mr. Mayor, Joe, I, when I mentioned the enhanced landscaping, it was only for the multifamily.
The plaza.
That was in the plaza. That was the only location I was.
Right.
Interested in, in doing nowhere else along that because yeah, obviously that's very difficult to do. So. And Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Hoagland.
I'll just, just weigh in here. It's one of those things when you get the packet and you open it up and see what's before you. And I, I, I was like you, a little bit surprised that there's commercial here. How in the world is that going to work? The access to me is just difficult. But then I, I think Councilman Borton raised an important point about, we, we follow the process. This is what we have here. We have to be patient with it, give it time, make it work. I, I think the applicant did a, a very good job in designing this site with the constraints they had to work with. And then making sure that modifications are made. They heard from the residents, you know, not everyone's happy, you never get a hundred percent. But making changes, losing that unit off the end to provide more space. Doing some things that I think through walkability and, and making it a, a desirable space, a place where people want to live and have a community. And that's very important as we, as we grow, as pointed out, this is not the same reading we grew up in. So, but having that sense of community in, in that area that you live and, and, and hopefully there'll be some, some commercial down the road. And, and have it in that place. But I, I think it will be difficult just because of the access points for, for commercial. But, but to stay true to what we have and has been laid out and in our goals. You know, people, times when developers come before us and they want to change the density and change the comp plan. And people just scream and now we have it and what it's supposed to be. And now they want to change it again. It's just, it's just interesting for us to go through this process weekly to, to see the different, different back and forth on depending what's, what's being proposed. So I, I think overall it was, it was, it was well designed. So I, I appreciate the work that went into it.
Councilman Schrader.
I, the commercial is important to me. I'm glad to see there's commercial here. I, I think it's actually, to me, it's more neighborhood scaled commercial. It's not like a huge looming, you know, Walmart or something. I mean, this, hopefully the way it could evolve would be some uses are complimentary to the neighborhood and I like the integration. I appreciate the pedestrian oriented design. At first, when I looked at this, I really didn't think I'd be supportive, but I appreciate all the changes that the applicant made after the planning and zoning meeting. And I think the process has really worked in terms of improving this. I'm not loving the transition in the northeast corner against a single family home. But I think the enhanced landscaping will help and it doesn't look like the neighbor is directly looking out, you know, off the side of their house there. So I think I can live with it. I wouldn't want to turn down a project over that detail. Overall, I'm supportive of it. I would echo the same comment, though. I, at least I'd be very, very surprised if I would ever support a rezone of that commercial piece. Just to put that out there as well. I think we need to wait and let that happen. However, long it takes may take a while, but it'll come and hopefully the right tenants that fit there will come as well. Yeah, I think overall I'm supportive of it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
Thank you. Um, really wanted to say thank you to the applicant for, for sticking out all this time trying to figure this out. This is a really tough piece, the geography and the canals. And it is, it's a tough go. We've seen other properties like this sit for a really long time that are, that are great usable spaces in our city because folks don't want to take them on. And so we appreciate you going to all the hard work to try to figure this out. And to listen to the public and to continue to keep working on the project until there's something that is really beneficial to Meridian. We know the incredible amount of work that it takes to get to here and then risk, you know, potentially not receiving approval. So I am, I, I think the changes that were made from the Planning and Zoning Commission until now are, are excellent. Thank you so much for making all those considerations. It's pretty significant to lose an entire floor off of two buildings and to restructure everything that way. My, my only outlying concern is just that there'd be a better transition between the commercial and the residential on the south side of that commercial building. And I don't know how we, and perhaps that's a question for Joe. I don't know how we actually add that into a requirement. As far as, I mean, it, it's very random to just say, hey, we want, we want taller trees there. Like, how do we, how do we condition that? I'm not necessarily saying that we need 25 feet of landscaping, considering the combination of the road and the, and landscaping that's there will be over 30 feet. But can you help us figure out how to, to condition that appropriately?
Councilman, or Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Joe.
Thank you. Councilman Pearl, thank you. There's, there's probably a number of ways. I, I think a general, you know, additional DA provision, just, just state something to you, to the effect that the required buffer between the CC and the R15 zoning district should be at least X amount of feet with vegetation that touches at maturity. That we have a lot of that language in code already and we've utilized that kind of a provision previously. That in alignment with the drive aisle that's kind of proposed there. From a planning perspective, I think offers a sufficient buffer between. And, and further the, the placement of that commercial building being where it is was partially driven by staff as well. We, we specifically told the applicant that, hey, we wanted that, frankly, a neighborhood serving use a little closer so that people could walk. You know, you want to activate that plaza. You want to have a kid's birthday there while you're hanging out and getting ice cream, hopefully, or, or whatever, a burger and a beer and hang out, whatever it might be. It, that's what the focus was there. So I, I don't want to push it so far away or create such a barrier that it just completely walls it off. And I know that's not your intention either, but you know, noise as well. And just to, again, you can also limit the hours of operation. Code does say because it's adjacent to residential, it's going to be 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM. So it can't be 24 hours. If you want to limit it further, that could be another avenue to quote unquote buffer the uses that would go there. It, at least you could, you could maybe make it specific to the, the second site, you know, the, the building pad closest to the residential. And limit the hours on that building alone. You do have flexibility in that DA provision.
Mr. Mayor walked away.
Guess you got the floor. I don't know.
So yes, I would like to, I'd like to limit that at least to 9:00 PM, I think is appropriate for that area. But as far as the, what I have in mind is it's just really densely landscaped, more dense landscaping behind that building, whether it's more trees and tree, and trees of maturity at the time of planting, not like trees of maturity 10 years from now. So is there a way for us to condition that the trees need to be mature at the time of planting, like the height of the building? And then, you know, maybe, maybe double the amount that would normally go in there or something to that effect. I just, I, I don't want it, I don't want it to be separated completely. But I also want to respect the fact that, you know, the backside of commercial buildings can get kind of ugly. And I don't want that to be a value issue for the folks that live there.
Councilman Pearl, the, the great points and you, you can, again, we have some of that language in code thankfully already to have the vegetation that touches. You can say at planting instead of maturity, a hundred percent. And because the building, to your very last point, because it faces residential, that has to meet pretty much all of our design standards for commercial. They don't get out of anything. So it will not be an ugly building. They'll have to do wall modulation, multiple field materials, multiple roof variations, all of that. It can't just be a box and, and it certainly won't be an ugly color.
Thank you.
Absolutely. I, I would just note, sorry, Mr. Mayor. If council agrees on 9:00 PM, that's fine. I, I, maybe that point might be up for discussion. I don't know if nine, it seems a little early, but I, I come from California, so you know, 11:00 PM seems early most times. So it, it's frustrating when things close at eight and nine around here sometimes if you want to eat late, but it can happen.
So counsel, I'm going to make him another pitch observation for your consideration that would require the applicant to come forward. But I'm really concerned about the left hand out onto Linder. That goes through a left, it's two lanes plus a left-hand turn lane that you have to drive through the back end of it in order to make that turning movement. And but for across the street, it wouldn't be allowed under the guidelines. As we go into what type of commercial makes sense, we talk about the neighborhood feel of this. Our left-hand turn movement is that what we want to have. And I, I'm, again, I'm going through the city. I'm looking at our areas. I'm looking at our problem spots. And, you know, those type of situations, if we're setting up for the long-term success, do we want to set up the, set up the expectations now for what that success should look like? Instead of having a conversation in 10 years, 15 years, when there are too much traffic as Linder Road overpass goes in, that becomes a more of a thorough fair north-south. It's gonna eventually be impacting something at some point in time. And do we want commercial to know what the likely limitations are? As we said, that can change. Is it a limitation we're, we'd be willing to consider at this point in time? So we don't have unsafe turning movements out of that long-term.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Schrader.
I think I'm picking up what you're laying down and it makes sense to me. I don't, are, can we as a council specify a right out and specify that there's not a left turn? I feel like, are we overstepping our role or do we have that ability?
I'm sure Mr. Mayor will comment as well, but I, I don't know that we can dictate what goes in the median. But onsite, as we did with Gramercy, making the curb in the entrance or whatever to very much discourage people turning left. I've seen that and I, I think we would have that power to condition that as a DA provision or condition of approval.
And the developer has a opportunity to sign or not sign if that was a condition, if that was the case. But I think at least warrants the question is whether it, whatever success looks like long-term. If ACHD starts in five years, says, sorry, go away. What do we want this to be long-term? I think that's really the question, the expectations. But the ramifications of that, you're pushing more commercial traffic out through the residential side of the neighborhood, potentially to go left. It may, may not, that may not. But just again, looking at what the traffic implications are in this area, that, that access is a big issue, in my opinion, long-term. Mr. Gary.
Mr. Members, the council, Joe sounded just like an attorney. Yeah, he's correct. Yeah, definitely. We don't have a way to limit the access onto the road, uh, until in Linder. But we can limit the access from the site out to the public right away. The challenge is sometimes is how it gets instructed, how it gets used, you know, how it gets enforced. It would appear likely because of the current use on the west side of the roadway, they're unlikely to ever put candles to prevent the emergency services from being accessing onto Linder. So there's unlikely to ever be any other impediment to turning in this site from going southbound on Linder. But definitely we can fashion in the development agreement restrictions on the access out of the property. So we can put that in there.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Pearl.
There's, there's several other areas of our city that have this concern. And I, I personally don't think that it's going to be any worse than any of the others. So I currently turn out of my neighborhood onto 10 mile and it's like running the gauntlet every day. It's much, much more dangerous than this is going to be. And it's just directly south of the commercial building. So I, I just, I don't, and there's a lot of these and I don't know that we can regulate all of them. And this reminds me of when you're coming out of the wind, uh, just to the north of here at the Windco exit. You're turning out of Windco, you turn left across this commercial and then there's the fire station right there. And the fire station, you know, that's not going to be ever blocked off because of the fire station. But that, that doesn't feel like an unsafe place to turn left. And I kind of see this playing out as a similar to feel to how that is all set up. So I'm not in favor of that condition myself.
I, I think the difference here is we, we've had some experiences even on Eagle Road recently where we have areas where the trap, when the traffic gets backed up, people start making turning movements that they can't see. And this does have queuing back to an area. And there's no, that, not a center turn area where you're supposed to move into. I mean, you're not even really supposed to move into the center turn area to access the area. But you got to drive through a left-hand turn lane, go in the opposite direction to a certain extent to even turn into the next lane. Though, those are the types of things where you're almost going against traffic to make this turning action based on my look at the map. I, I mean, even maybe if you don't want to do it, ask ACHD to move the turn lane closer to the intersection and I have the queuing lane so far back. But those are, those are the issues and, and they do exist all over the place. Locust Grove coming out in those areas right there by the, uh, just south of the Maverick. There's a road there that turns over through two lanes and into a left-hand turn lane. Eventually that's going to be a problem today, not necessarily, but I'm just trying to look at long-term. Not necessarily what's there today. Eventually the area you're talking about is also going to be a problem.
Councilman Borton. So if, if one of the conditions that's contemplated is that access onto Linder Road be designed onsite to ensure right in, right out only? Is what you're.
That would be my, my contemplation to the applicant.
The applicant has been stoic without gesture. So that requires us to get your input. If that is reasonable to consider, if it's fatally flawed, from your perspective, how would you respond?
Yeah, council, council members. I think it will make it more difficult, you know, to make that commercial area more attractive, of course. Is it a, a no-go? I, it's hard to say.
I, it's hard to say, you know? But we would prefer it not to be and to be able to turn left on there. I think that, you know, with the adjacent emergency use across the street, that does limit at least any further congestion from another use, you know, intersection type of situation or a high-traffic, you know, if it was a Winko exiting and we're also exiting or something to that effect. So I think there's a little bit of a alleviation there in the impacts of that left turn. I would recommend that we don't limit to right in and that we go with a left turn south onto Linder.
Maybe one more thing. It also allows left-hand turn movements off of Linder into the project. Under the, under the current. If, yeah, maybe not. That's, I think you could, but I'm, without designing, but it's gonna, it's gonna create a problem. It, it, it will, in some regards, create some real challenges. People stopped on Linder to try, because there's no left-hand turn lane to turn into this property at that location. Because again, there's a left-hand lane that goes, extends to the end beyond where the turning movements begin. So whether we do something here or ACHD does something on their end to alleviate that. So there's a queuing space. Left-hand turn movements in and out at this location will be a problem long-term or short-term when it starts getting built. Yep, but I'll, that's an impact on those guys over there, so. If Christie was here from ACHD, I would ask her and I thought that she was going to be on the call. But no one from ACHD is with us that I can tell.
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Holcomb.
Yeah, I, I live out there and he's at Linda Road quite frequently. That is a very long lane. They planned to head for, for that queuing, which really don't have that stacking rush hour periods. I, I would think for the short-term, they could, they could shorten that to make a center turn lane for access in and out temporarily. But there will be that point in time where it's, it's not going to work, even if with a center turn lane. But it, it is possible to do that at this point in time from my experience of living there. So, you know, so there, there is a short-term solution, but eventually it, it will not be a solution.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Pro.
I'm going to attempt to make a motion, hoping that I have gathered everything that we're trying to incorporate here. So I move that we approve.
The public hearing is still open, so.
Oh, I thought we had closed. I knew that we.
Second.
I have a motion, second, close the public hearing on paper, signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose nay? Yeah, it's having the public hearing is closed. Counselor Pro.
Thank you. I move that we approve the application for Lennon Point Community H20210071 for the annexation of the preliminary plot, unconditional use permit with the following modifications to add mature landscaping in the northeast corner between the building A, which is the apartment complex, and to create more of a green space there and less, let's hardscape. And then I would add that we would add plants that are maturity at, excuse me, that landscaping that's mature at planting between the commercial building on the, the south side of the commercial area and the residential to the south. I believe that that's everything that we, there was an outlier. If there's anything else, please let me know.
Mr. Mayor.
Can we wait for a second?
Second for discussion.
I have a motion, a second. Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sorry, I, in no way do I want to belabor this, trust me. But the, just, I was thinking about the buffer thing between the CC and the R15 again. Because that's probably going to come in very late. I think the DA provision should probably include a timing of that buffer being installed with the residential. So it has time to mature as well and not at the time of the commercial building being built. Because that's usually when it goes in. So I don't know if Councilwoman Pro and the council agree with that and want to make that modification. Or I could be completely out of my mind.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Pro.
I, I like that idea. I, I know that that's probably kind of unconventional because applicant usually doesn't start doing the landscaping piece until that, you know, that commercial area goes in. I would be, I guess the conversation could be, you know, we didn't, we didn't mention putting mature landscaping on the south side in the berms, or excuse me, in the, in the mews that are between the sidewalk and the, the north side of the first home. And that could be an area where they add more mature landscaping to, to buffer that. I, I would be in favor of, of adding that landscaping prior to the commercial building being built. But I don't know if, I don't know what's typical. Is, is that, is that a condition that happened before, Joe?
I have a good memory, but I don't know if it's that good with this. I wouldn't say that that's typical. But, well, we usually require the street buffers regardless of what's adjacent to it. So I guess that's, that's, that could be precedent there. I know that could be a bad word, but that could give us some basis there. But because of the discussion that we've had and what council has had, I, I believe it makes sense to include that there rather than wait for the commercial. But I guess at the same time, if the commercial isn't there, the, the issue isn't there. So I can see it both ways. I just wanted to throw that out in case council wanted to give those trees time to mature.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Pro.
Joe, what is, what is considered maturity at planting? Like, is there a height? What, what's considered a mature tree? I mean, it just totally depends on what they put in, right? So maturity at planting could be anything. I, I don't know, like, how, how technical do we get on this? I, I think that, you know, they're, they're likely not going to implement any of the parking infrastructure, the curbing or anything that will require landscaping in that area around the 3,000 square foot building until that building's ready to be built, correct?
More than likely, yes.
With that just space, so that they're not going to bring in landscaping and add the curbing in and, and everything just to have some trees there to buffer something that doesn't exist yet. So it sounds, I think, I think it just needs to stay with the trees are, when, when that's developed, the trees are mature instead of being, you know, a one-foot shrub. So however, that needs to be worded in the DA.
Perfect, I, I got it. Sorry to come.
Counselor Schrader.
Just for discussion, so I wouldn't be able to support the motion because I am now convinced that we need a right-in, right-out off of Linder. And I'm really concerned that if we're letting people make the left-hand turn, we're just kicking the can down the road. So I feel, you know, Mayor Simison won me over actually with that argument. I think that's a true issue. I actually think limiting it to right-in, right-out will make it more likely that when we do get the commercial users, that there'll be more neighborhood scale users. So I think that fits with what is intended here. So I, I would not support the current motion without that condition.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Pro.
Personally, I think that's going to cause issues getting commercial users to come in. I, I think that's going to delay, I think it's going to create a desirability problem. And I don't, I don't love that element either. There are just so many, there's so many other, I, I'm not saying that, that we want it to be a dangerous area, but this, this location to me is not even remotely the most dangerous left turn that can be made. I mean, I, 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 there's so many dangerous left turns that exist right now that I, I just don't, there is a center turn lane right now on Linder Road. And there is going to be stacking on the right turn lane heading north. But I, I actually drive that exact same scenario multiple times a day. And I get, and there's a, you know how when you're entering into a subdivision, they put a big square white box in front of the entrance, right? So that you can see this is an entrance to a residential area. That protects people from turning left. From, if, if somebody's heading south and they get in the left turn lane to turn in there, they're going to have a protected box that says, don't park in this space. Somebody's turning in here because it's residential. There's, there's features that are put on the road to protect that. So I, and there's already a left turn lane that exists there on Linder. It's four lanes already with left turn. I don't, I'm not, I guess I'm not understanding the problem.
Counselor member, over the question. Question's been called, quick call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Schrader.
No.
Burnt.
Oh.
Perro.
I.
Borden.
No.
Oakland.
No.
Ocean fails, one eye, four nays.
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Schrader.
I will, I will give it a shot. So I hope, maybe for discussion, I don't know how much discussion. After considering all staff applicant public testimony, I move to approve file number H2021-0071 as presented in the staff report for today's hearing date with the following modifications. Behind the commercial requirement that at the time the commercial is completed, that there be mature planting that touches at maturity, that there be mature planting in the northwest corner of the site next to building A, mature trees, excuse me, and with the condition that the access off of Linder Road be constructed in a way to encourage right-in, right-out only. I apologize, I meant the northeast corner.
I have a motion, a second, is there discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Pro.
I just want to say that I, I am in support of this project and just with just the one element of not being in agreement with restricting the left turn. And so I will, I will vote no on that motion, but I just want to make it clear to the applicant that I am in favor of this project with the exception of that one element.
Any further discussion?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Borden.
As, as part of that motion, Mr. Neri, is that the obligation to design the Linder Road access to be right-in, right-out on the property? Is that a DA condition? Would that need to be specified?
Yes, sir. That's what I took it to be.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Seeing no further discussion, quick call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Schrader.
Aye.
Burnt. Perro.
Nay.
Borden.
Aye.
Oakland.
Aye. Three ayes, two nays, and the item is agreed to. Thank you very much. And best of luck, Joe, getting all that squared away.
I got it.
Next item up is item five, which is a, under Department Commission reports, a police department fiscal year 2022 net zero budget amendment in the amount of $5,000. Turn this over to Lieutenant Brown.
Mr. Mayor and city council members, I request that, I request your approval for a partnership for success mini-grant that was awarded by the Central District Health to provide drug-free school zone signs to all 58 West Ada School District campuses. These signs are to replace the previous signs with updated verbiage at what West Ada School District's request. The administration requests the addition of the word vape because there have been multiple occasions where parents have been asked to stop vaping on campus and that language is not currently on those signs. With that, I will stand for any questions.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions?
Lieutenant Brown, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Borden.
Will these signs be placed only at right-in and right-out locations? I don't know where the designations will be placed, Councilman, but they'll be frequent throughout the campuses.
Got Jerry Seinfeld in the house.
Without any further comic relief, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Borden.
I move that we approve fiscal year 2022 net zero budget amendment in the amount of $5,000 for Central District Health Partnership for Success mini-grant that was just presented to us by Lieutenant Brown.
I have a motion, a second, is there a discussion? If not, quick call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Schrader.
Aye.
Burnt.
Aye.
Perro.
Aye.
Borden.
Aye.
Oakland.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries. Thank you. Counsel, are we good to continue going?
Yep.
All right, then with that, we'll move on to item six, which is the Park and Recreation Department. The Marion Parks and Recreation Master Plan Update Finding Summary. And it's over to Mr. Setaway.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is meant to be just a brief update and status report for you. As you know, we're working on the master plan update. Art Thatcher was before you this fall when we were kicking off the, the project, gave you, kind of laid out the, the sequence of events that would be happening. We rolled straight into a major public involvement activity along with a variety of stakeholder focus groups and interviews with each of you and our Parks and Rec Commissioners and others. So I believe you're familiar with that. We've also had the survey out and Art, we're, Art's coming back this week to do a big presentation tomorrow night. And he's going to give you more of those details. So I'm going to turn it over to Art, but I just wanted to introduce Art and just say that tonight is our commitment to come before you with regular touchpoints throughout this process to keep you informed of, of where we are and what the next steps are. So with that, I'm going to turn this over to Art Thatcher.
Thank you, Steve, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Thank you for allowing me a few minutes to come and meet with you. I could put the 68 slideshow for tomorrow up and we could go through that. Sorry. I am here tonight to give you an update on the, on the master plan. And so we're in the, the findings and visiting stage. This is kind of the, the four stages of the master plan. So we're, we're back to do the, the findings, to go over the results of the survey, to kind of touch base again on the, on our public engagement, look at those recurring themes and then begin to develop recommendations and actions for the master plan. And so as you can see, all of those that are in kind of the, the orange are those different tasks that we've completed. We're down kind of in the community center feasibility, the cost recovery and the findings presentation stages. We're here this week to do the, the findings presentation. And so as you remember, we were here in November and, and did our public engagement. We held six focus groups for 39 participants. We interviewed 10 elected officials, stakeholders. We did a SWAT workshop with the staff and did interviews with the staff. We also did a briefing to, to the commission and then toured all the parks and facilities and then held an open forum. We had 18 people attend that in a, both in, in person and virtually. And so we really did a, asked about strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, what new programs, facilities you'd like to see. And so just kind of to recap from the focus groups, the strengths of the apartment, the staff, the leadership, that they're approachable, the diversity of offerings, location of your parks, and they're well-planned, they're, they're bikeable. the diversity of offerings, location of your parks, um, and they're well planned, um, they're, they're bikeable, they're for everyone. Um, and then your partnerships were some of those, those top things that strengths that were identified by, um, by the focus group participants. We also asked about areas of improvement and parking was the, the, the one that came up the most along with communication. And, um, I can tell you that with all the communities that I work with, um, around the country, those areas of improvement, communication and parking are always in the top three. And, and so, um, it's, it's not, um, unreasonable to see those. Uh, the need for more athletic fields, diamond, um, specifically diamond fields for youth, and then a greater need for more open space and, um, and more park space are some of those other areas for improvement. So we asked about priorities of, of everything that we talked about. What would this, what would your priorities be for the focus groups? And so connectivity was the number one, um, indoor facility, rectangle fields to support, um, demand, land acquisition, and then, um, managing growth were those top five that came out of the, of the focus groups for those priorities. So from there, we, um, we took that information. We took the, the information that we got from your, our leadership interviews and we developed a, a, a survey. Um, and so we did our needs assessment survey. We mailed that to, um, 3,500 homes, um, 3,444 of them were delivered. And so we got a return of 3,200 of the invitation surveys and then, um, another 378 of the open links. So a total return of 690 and giving us that 5% plus or minus margin of error. And so we asked about needs for future facilities. One of the things, um, about Green Play did the 2015 master plan. We also did the survey, the same survey firm did both. So we were able to do some comparisons. And so when we asked about future needs, um, you can see that a community recreation center was the top need. Um, in, in 2021, an indoor aquatic facility came in second. Um, a field house, gymnasium space, a performing arts center and the ice rink were the, were the top out of the, out of a list of, um, 10 facilities that we, that we asked about priorities. And you can see in 2015, those were the same top five. Um, and, and really just the indoor aquatic facility and the community center kind of flipped from, um, from 2015 to 2021. So that same need is there within the community. We also asked about, um, outdoor facilities, future needs. Um, again, kind of looking at that comparison. Parks and pathways, improvements to park amenities, um, shade structures, playgrounds, um, lights on athletic fields. Again, were those top five? You can see they were very similar to the 2015. And, um, and what was, what kind of dropped in from, from 15 to 21 was the, um, but public art in parks and exercise stations along trails and a lost a little bit of traction, but really only about two tenths of a percent. So we also asked about communication because communication was one of the things that, that came out of the, out of the needs assessment, out of the, um, focus groups. And you can, we asked about what are the best ways that, that we can reach you? And so emails from the city, social media, the activity guide and, um, and the website, the city's website were those really top four. And we see that, um, very much within, again, around the country. Um, that there's really a kind of a mixed method. There's not one, um, method that, that does the best. Uh, we do see that the activity guides finish in that top 10% or so on, in these. Um, because what people like is they like to get them. Um, they go through it and they can circle what they want to do, but then they want to turn around. They want to be able to register online for their programs and do those things. So, um, these are, these are very, um, very common methods. So we look at those recurring themes. And so trails, pathways, connectivity, um, the need for a community center, improved park amenities, I'm improving the park amenities, maintaining what you currently have, making sure that you're taking care of your current facilities, your current amenities, um, before you start to build a lot of new shade structures in parks, land acquisition, keeping up with your rapid growth, um, lighted athletic fields, space for performing arts and indoor aquatic facility. But really those, um, those recurring themes that we, um, that we came through all of those data points. And so, um, Dave Peterson, who's with me, does our inventory and our level service analysis. And so he went and visited all the parks, looked at all the amenities and, um, and these were some of the, kind of his observations from the inventory site visits. The parks are very consistent across the board. Um, they're very well maintained, they're very high standard. Impressively, your restrooms are probably the cleanest of any system that we, that we use. So it speaks well to your maintenance. There, you know, that, that most of the parks do have public art and that, um, it's very well received. Additional bike repair stations, uh, have been added and your turf conditions are in excellent shape. And there seems to be a really high priority to plant trees in many of the parks. And so we, we're taking all of that information and again, we'll be doing a presentation to the public tomorrow, getting their feedback, getting them to validate, um, the things that we've heard. We've got a lot more of the, kind of the survey results that we'll go over with them. Dave will go over a lot of the heat maps, um, for walkability and accessibility to recreation facilities, um, during that. And then, um, and then, and then on Thursday, we'll be working with the staff to really look at. We, we do this visioning workshop where we, um, we look at the recurring themes and then the data points where we saw them and then begin to develop kind of high-level recommendations to meet those. And then, um, as a project team, we'll begin to look at those recommendations and actions to meet those, um, like we did in the, um, in the previous master plan. Um, in addition to the master planning process, on March 30th, we have an open house and a public meeting, um, with the next step for the community center feasibility study. Um, and then in, um, in April, we'll be doing the public workshops and the sorting for, um, for the cost recovery um, portion of this project. And so again, our next step is this draft recommendations beginning to really kind of hone in on the recommendations and actions, um, for the master plan. And so I'm happy to answer any questions. I know it's been a long night for you.
Thank you. Our council questions.
Mr. Mayor.
Council on Pro.
Thank you very much, Art. Could you go back to the slides to talk about the fifth strip priorities? I just want to get some understanding of a couple of those.
The survey priorities? Or the
Keep going. One more. There you go. So when it says areas of improvement, um, communication, what does that mean? Communication between the city and the public or communication? I, I'm not like.
Yes.
Can you help me understand?
Sure. It, it's the, the public knowing about what, what programs are going on, communication with the public, um, information being given out, your marketing, your communication, those, those are the things that, that they were talking about.
Can you share what the, what they felt was lacking? Cause I mean, it's published in like so many different ways.
Yes, yeah, yes ma'am, it is. And, and as I said, it, it's common across the country. And, um, I mean, you can, you can invest millions of dollars into, into marketing and, and citizens will tell you, well, I didn't know about that. I didn't hear about that. I've, and, and you've put it in all the social media areas. You can even walk to their door and put a flyer in their hand and the next day they'll tell you they didn't know about it. Uh, it's not uncommon and it's not something that we, um, get upset about, but I mean, it is, I, I know Shelley was, um, was, was very taken aback when, when she saw this is that the second highest kind of area of improvement.
Can you, um, go to the next slide? I just have one more question on the next slide. So the, um, the land acquisition that, that means like the city looking for additional purchase opportunities for more parks?
Yes.
For, for fields? Or is that what that means?
Yes. Yes. It's continuing to, to, um, acquire land as development. So staying ahead of the development so that you're not, um, losing ground on your provision of parks for, um, for the community.
And then what does inclusiveness mean? Uh, third from the bottom.
Yeah. Um, being, being inclusive, making sure that you're programming for everyone, um, both ethnically, age-wise, um, sports-wise, making sure that there's a balance between active and passive recreation. Um, those are the kind of that inclusivity piece.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Council on.
Art, if you could advance just a couple of slides. I had a question about something where they're showing the three point 2015 versus that 2021 survey. And I found it interesting, the field house gymnasium space from the 2015 survey to the 2021 survey because the city acquired Home Court and that was a, a, a big move. And, uh, I just found it interesting that and it could be because with more growth, more people and there's not enough room. So that's just kind of interesting where we did make an acquisition and improve it, and yet there's still more need than was expressed before.
And, and some of that may also be a part of the communication piece where the, the community that, that saw that as a private facility is really not aware that, that you've taken it over and that's now a public facility and then it's open to the public. And it goes to that marketing, that communication piece.
So did I just hear blame Shelley again? Sorry, Shelley.
She's going to come get me in the morning. I can tell.
Counsel, any additional questions before you all tune into my own night? All right. Thank you, Art.
Thank you all very much. Hope you have a good evening.
You too. Counsel, that moves us on to item seven this evening, which is ordinance number 22 dash 1970. Ask the clerk to read the orders by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's an ordinance related to Woodcrest Townhomes H 2021 0015 Rezone, for reason of a parcel of land located in the southwest one quarter of the southeast one quarter of Section 5 Township 3 North, Range 1 East, Boise, Meridian, Idaho. And also being a portion of Lot 4, Block 1 of Mulane subdivision as shown in Book 87 of Platts on pages 9881 through 9883, records of Ada County, Idaho. Establishing and determining the land use zoning classification of 2.10 acres of land from Mello Limited Office Zoning District R 15 Medium, Medium High Density Residential Zoning District in the Meridian City Code. Providing a copy of this ordinance shall be filed with Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law and providing for a summary of the ordinance and providing for a waiver of the reading rules and providing
Thank you. Counsel, you've heard the sort of spread by title. Is there any beta like a readiness entirety? Ralph says no. And do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Council on Pro.
I mean that we approve ordinance number 22 dash 1970 with a suspension of rules.
Second, the motion.
I have a motion of second to approve ordinance number 22 dash 1970 under suspension of the rules. Is there any discussion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, straighter.
Hi.
Burnt. Perro.
Hi.
Borton. Oakland.
Hi.
All ayes, motion carries and the ordinance is agreed to. Counsel, anything on the future meeting topics?
Mr. Mayor. Here's one more.
Oh, I'm sorry. I apologize. Ordin, next item up is number eight, which is ordinance number 22 dash 1971. Ask the clerk to read this ordinance by title.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's an ordinance related to Apex East Subdivision H 2021 0086 Rezone. For reason of the parcel of land being a portion of government lot two and a portion of southwest one quarter of the northeast one quarter of Section 5 Township Tree Township 2 North, Range 1 East, Boise, Meridian, Idaho. Establishing and determining the land use zoning classification of 32.21 acres of land from R 4 Medium Low Density Residential Zoning District to R 8 Medium Density Residential Zoning District in the Meridian City Code. Providing a copy of this ordinance shall be filed with Ada County Assessor, the Ada County Recorder and the Idaho State Tax Commission as required by law and providing for a summary of the ordinance and providing for a waiver of the reading rules and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Counsel. You've heard this ordinance spread by title. Is there anybody like a readiness entirety? If not, do I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Council on Pro.
I made that we approve ordinance number 22 dash 1971 with a suspension of rules.
Second motion.
I have a motion of second to approve ordinance number 22 dash 1971 under suspension of the rules. Is there any discussion? If not, call the roll.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, straighter.
Hi.
Burnt. Perro.
Hi.
Borton. Oakland.
Hi.
All ayes, motion carries and the ordinance is agreed to. Counsel, anything under future meeting topics? Or do I have a motion to adjourn?
Mr. Mayor, I move we adjourn.
I have a motion to adjourn. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Yeah, I just have it. We are adjourned.
Good night, guys.
Good night.